Welcome to the Board of Education meeting of Monday, August 26, 2019. The, in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on August 22, 2019, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Surely. Ms. Eldridge-Howard?
Here.
Ms. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Dr. Swisant?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Ms. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. We'll be moving to executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association, and the matters discussed in executive session will be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion in a second, please, to go into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session. We'll be back in a half hour. We are back from our executive session. We'll now take another roll call.
Ms. Eldridge-Howard?
Here.
Ms. Gillette?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Dr. Swisant?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Ms. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to the approval of minutes. I'll take a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the executive session held on July 22, 2019, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve minutes from the regular meeting held on July 22, 2019. May I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Thanks, Chris.
Second.
Thanks, Lisa. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Yes, Ann?
I just have one correction to make.
Please speak in the microphone. Microphone, microphone.
Sorry. I just had one correction to make. The paragraph that talked about the Board President having the, having the number of affordable housing units, and then the impact on the school as we already are over capacity in our school buildings. You encouraged the community to attend not the planning board but the township committee meeting.
Township committee meeting, correct.
So could, could that be corrected in our minutes?
Okay. We could approve it as amended.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on July 29, 2019. May I have a motion in second, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Joyce. Okay. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any abstentions? Okay. You're a little too quick.
You're too slow.
Okay. I guess.
Motion passes.
Moving along. Okay. We recognize the correspondence that was received by the Board, and now we're here for comments from the Board and public. Are there any comments from the public? This is the time when you can make comments on any matter that's on the agenda. There'll be another comment period at the end of the meeting for items that are not on the agenda or any other business. Generally, you state your name and your address, and there's a three-minute time limit per speaker due to the number of people here. Please understand that these forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the Board. In instances where the Board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the Board President or Superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the Board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So with that, I'll take comments from the public on the agenda. Is that it? Okay.
My name is Bill Nussbaum. Apparently, I live in Hillsborough at 205 Brookside Lane. I don't see any more agendas. Is there a reason why there are no more?
We typically, we, we don't know what the audience is, but we do typically print stackful, and it looks like it was all, they aren't available online, but we do print out for the public. We did print it out a certain amount, and that's unfortunately was, was taken at the moment.
Okay. Since there are, I have a question.
We have the agenda up here?
I barely see that.
And you can, you can get it on your phone at https.us, which is the district website.
I mean, it's a little, I mean, it's hard to do right now. Yeah. Let's see. I was wondering if the fees for athletics is on the agenda? Okay.
The policy is there for second reading tonight.
Okay. So it's obviously on the agenda.
If you'd like to make some comments, this would be the time.
Yes, I do. First of all, I would think that your general mission here as Board members is to expand educational opportunities, correct? I see the $100 fee per sport, per child, as something that's antithetical to that goal. And I really, I have two sons that play sports at Hillsborough High School. Two, they both play football. One plays volleyball in spring, and the other one is track. And my one son who plays volleyball was talking about, I mean, he loves the sport, but when he was talking about potentially going out for volleyball in the summer, I mean, in the spring, and we told him, like, it's $100 per sport, I know that he, he's a good kid, and he didn't want to, and he said that he really doesn't want to play anymore. And I know that's not the truth, but it made me want to throw up when I heard that because I know that the $100 fee might not seem like a lot to a community like Hillsborough, who, where most of the people are pretty well off, but to a kid who hears $100, he's got, it's going to cost his family $100 to play, that kind of gets emotional for him. So, for me, I've been, I'm an educator. I teach at a high school in a different district. We have no fees there, but I know $100 would be the same type of obstacle for them. And I really believe that this $100 fee is somewhat of a retribution for the failed referendum, as well as a lot of the other fees, like the bus fee and the extra Chromebook fee. And that's not what should be happening here. All of that, all of that, I blame Dr. Schiff partially for, because his plan to put all these different, these two referendums back-to-back was a failed plan and was never going to pass in this climate. And he should just have one big referendum for new building, and whatever money is we lost from the state, it's a bad, it was a bad plan to come up with from the beginning, and now it's going to hurt kids like my son and a lot of other kids who are on the border of playing sports or not. Once again, your mission is to expand educational opportunities. Each one of these fees does the opposite of that, and it's retribution. I voted for this referendum. A lot of other parents did as well. You can't punish us for the people who don't want, you know, the extra fees for, the extra expenses for, that's going to cost, basically, the money that's going to be lost from the state. So, once again, I think these fees, I'm calling for a total retraction of the fees for sports as well as fees for buses. It's going to be chaos down near that high school, starting September 5. And if, if one kid gets hurt, or one, God forbid, gets killed, think about that. Think about the traffic, the immense amount of traffic that's going to ensue when you have 2,000 kids going to the same intersection at the same time at 7 o'clock in the morning. It doesn't make sense. It's bad for people. It's bad for our kids, and it should be totally retracted. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Heather Larico. I'm actually reading a statement by my daughter Diana Larico, who is a 2018 graduate. She wanted to be here, but unfortunately she had to return to school yesterday. This is what she wanted me to say. So, "HTPS is implementing an activity participation fee as of this school year for all clubs and activities, and as an alum, I am incredibly disappointed in my township's decision. I can't speak to how things stand at HMS and ARIS, but the high school is already seeing a sharp decline in club participation that is causing organizations to suffer and die out. I can't imagine that the additional cost of a participation fee will serve as anything but another deterrent, especially for students who come," sorry, "from lower-income families. Hillsborough has class problems, but that's a talk for another day. I think that sometimes parents and apparently Board of Education members forget the incredible powers of community building that after-school clubs have with their students. Writer's Circle gave me some of the best friends I could have asked for, tested my leadership skills, and set me down a career path that I never would have considered otherwise, and this next part makes my heart break. And I have to be honest, without the easy access to the LGBT community afforded to me by the GSA, my path of self-discovery would have certainly been one of self-hatred. As an aside, it kills me to think that there would be children that would be struggling in this marginalized community that would not take advantage or be able to participate in this amazing activity for children where they can feel safe." Back to Diana. This is back to what Diana said. "I know that budget cuts have hit this district hard, but somehow I doubt that firing dozens of teachers without warning and implementing a policy that assured a choke-out student participation are the best and only solutions. Do better."
Kelly Milano, 87 Meadowbrook Drive. I attended the RVCC meeting, and one of the things that was shared by one of the Board members was the concern for senior citizens being on fixed income. What I'd like to share or ask you to think about is that, as the teachers in this community, I might argue that we are worse off than the senior citizens because we are on a declining income. Year after year, our paychecks have gotten lower and lower. Then you have the teachers in district, like myself, who not only have a declining income raising taxes, but also have children in the middle school and the high school who will be paying fees this year. I feel like those people are triple-wammyed, okay? I did have a back-and-forth exchange with Mr. Joel Handler, inquiring about the Chromebook fee for this year for insurance being $60 when it was $40 year after year for a long time. And to be quite honest with you, I have a really difficult time knowing that we are in a contract with the Chromebook company, thinking that they would, mid-contract, increase our fee for insurance to $60. So when asked directly why that fee is raised from 40 to $60, his words were that he was instructed to raise the fee to $60 by Dr. Schiff. So what I'd like to know is, as a teacher in the district who is continuing to see a declining paycheck, will now be paying fees for sports, increased fee for Chromebook, you know, do I have the option to just pay $40 and not another $20 that is revenue generating? Thank you.
I'm Silas Gazari, 281 Autton Road. My question and comments are in regards to the superintendent's evaluation. Has it been done? Has the outcomes been calculated? As a fellow Board of Ed member, our Board spent hours on our superintendent's evaluation in the district that I live in. We use this information to coordinate and update district goals, as well as our strategic plan. This was done in June and July. I haven't heard anything or saw anything in writing on any of the agendas that this has been done here in Hillsborough yet. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the process, superintendent evaluation is based on six standards. First standard is the mission, vision, and core values, which encompasses effective leaders, leadership communicates a shared vision, core values, and high quality of education. The second is governance, ethics, and professional norms, managing the district, board policies, work effectively with the Board of Ed, et cetera. The third is operations management. Effective leaders manage school operations and resources.
Excuse me. This is not an agenda item.
Okay. So you want me to come back in a few?
Public comment now is for only items on the agenda. We saw it interrupt.
Sorry, Mr. Fogarty. I see that we have you in attendance tonight. I'm sure that's a...
No apologies necessary. I just want to make sure that we maintain...
Well, you know, we usually don't see the head of, you know, our lawyers here at a board meeting, but I'm sure that you're here for a reason. But I'll come back when it's more convenient.
I'm LaShawn Arrington, Deval Road, Hillsborough. I know we're only up here to discuss agenda items, but 75% of us don't have agendas, so we don't know what items are on the agenda. So I'm going to speak, and if you, if you want to hit your little gavel, please let me know, and I'll come back later. But before I address the Board, I just want to thank you, the staff, because now I believe we're ranked number 14 in the state, yes? Correct me if I'm wrong, 199th in the nation. That is an amazing accomplishment, and we got an A+. Do you give it up for yourself? I don't know if that's on the agenda. You had A+ in every category except for facilities, supplies, and diversity, which I can attest I just want to thank you for the superior education that you give to our students with barely adequate supplies and the lack of support from your superintendent. So I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Now to the Board. If this is not on the agenda, feel free to gavel, and I'll come back later. I know they haven't settled a contract. Will health insurance contribution from staff members increase?
Go ahead.
I'm asking a question. I'm assuming they will increase.
I can't hear your question.
Health insurance contributions?
Yes.
From the staff?
Yes.
Will they increase?
It depends on negotiations.
You're capped at 21%, but insurance, they have no control over the insurance cost.
The cost of insurance inevitably will increase.
Thank you. That was my question. Now, I know we're in impasse. Arbitrator, will they be assigned? You have arbitrator. Okay. Will it cost you money, the Board? Arbitrator?
Ma'am, first I want to remind you that this is not a Q and A. This is an opportunity for you to express your opinions to the Board.
Okay.
But let me finish, please.
Okay.
But let me finish. We are right now in mediation. We have had two mediation sessions, and currently in mediation, there is no cost to the Board for the state-appointed mediator. But again, this is not an agenda item, and it is also not a Q and A. So you can express your opinions, and we would certainly respect that, but we would ask that you respect the decorum of the Board.
Okay. No problem. Thank you. I will not ask any more questions. I will make a statement. Because they haven't settled, it's costing them money. Because their salary is not going up, but what they have to pay is going up. So technically, they are making less money this year than they will make next, excuse me, they're making less money this year than they made last year. So technically, they are paying to come to work to educate our children, and I think that is 100% unfair. I know in the school budget, because I am an educator, I am a teacher, so I do know, you have to include money for staff in the budget. I know along with breakage and outside funding and found money, there is a surplus. The thing is, I know you have the money. You just won't give them the money. So what I want you to think, if you went to a job where you educated our children, 14 in the state, 199th in the nation, and you're paying to go to work, I would look for another job. I'm just saying. That's just me. I just want to thank you guys for being with our, our children. I brought my son here tonight because I want him to know, he knows how hard I work as a teacher. I want him to know what his teachers and staff have to go through when they come to work. And one more thing I want to say, since I'm off the agenda, but I don't have one, so I don't know if I'm on the agenda or not. As a parent and as a community member, my confidence in the Board is sinking. It's near zero. And I just want to ask, very simply, how many of you are up for reelection during the next election? One, two, and, okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Are there any more?
Last person, raise your hand so we know what we're doing.
All right. I'd like to know how many more people are waiting to speak?
Who's the last person?
Okay. So we have three more speakers. Go.
Wait there. Four? Anybody else? Four?
Please line up.
Good. Thank you.
Can I go?
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Mary, Mary Martin, Autton Road Intermediate School, 6th grade teacher. I stand before you today with a heavy heart. Heavy because I do not feel cared for or valued as an employee. Every day, we teachers in ESP put our heart and soul into our students to make them feel valued and cared for. That's not always an easy task, given what we have to deal with outside of our classrooms. We, the teachers in ESPs of Hillsborough, get more respect outside of this town than we do here. Why is that? We have consistently made Hillsborough a desirable town to live in, and our teachers have been voted the best in New Jersey. And how is it that the Board refuses to treat us like the professionals that we are and give us a fair contract? No one but an educator knows just how much time we spend outside of our contracted hours, preparing lessons, grading papers, meeting with parents, meeting with students, shopping for supplies, making copies and officiating clubs that we do not get paid for. As a Board, you should have some degree of awareness of this commitment. You are certainly quick to claim it as your own when our district is celebrated, but refuse to acknowledge it when it does not suit your purposes. I venture to say that if we were paid by the hour, we would be making as much as our corporate counterparts, who may or may not have as much education as we do. I have been in this district for 17 years and have witnessed so many changes, some good and not so much, but the biggest change is the lack of respect that has been shown to us as professionals who are dedicated to our craft. Everyone, everyone in this room has a teacher to thank for your accomplishments that have been made in your own lives. You, as the Board, should be thanking us for the accomplishments, not undermining them through disrespect and refusal to provide a fair and equitable contract. We are the heart of this town. Please settle this contract so that we can get to the job of educating our students. Give us the respect and dedication that we greet our students with every single day. Thank you.
Brian Delisi, 9 Stats Drive. I'm here tonight because I'm a frustrated taxpayer that's concerned about the future of the school district. Dr. Schiff, is it true that you're more concerned about your future than you have interviewed for other school districts in this state?
That's an inappropriate question.
Thank you. My bad.
I'm at 414 Bradford Court. I just want to say that I think the whole busing thing, and I'm assuming busing's on your agenda. Is that true?
Please speak into the microphone.
Is busing on the agenda?
Busing?
Busing? The subscription busing?
Yeah.
Okay. I couldn't, I couldn't think of a more, one of the more harmful things for you to do than to cut the busing and providing a safe transport to these children to school. I think it's disgraceful, especially in this district. But my question here is this: Do you have a comprehensive description of everything regarding busing, contingency for snow days, you know, walkers, plowing? I mean, how is this all going to work? Because I know when I saw the subscription email come out, I called transportation. They couldn't answer my questions. For graduating seniors who could drive, there was no preference given to children who were losing their busing. That came two days later as a change, it seems, to the permit application. So again, where have you thought out every angle of the issues associated to walkers and written it down for parents? Because right now, in Principal Bingert's email, the only thing was a warning that there's going to be even more congestion in the morning to get their kids to school. So do you have a comprehensive list of every aspect of walkers and kids who work to save money to go to college now if they have to walk or find a way there at least one half of the year? What does that do to their work schedules? I mean, where's the consideration and where is the comprehensive description? Because quite frankly, the way it was all rolled out was very haphazard. You know, out of the blue one day, some of us get an email, not even knowing that we were the chosen few who got the email, that we were selective for subscription busing. And then if we signed into it, then we could write you a $1,000 check. So again, I ask you, where is the description of every aspect of a walker's experience, including snow days? You know, have, are you going to provide, you know, somebody to cross, help the kids cross safely Amwell Road?
Well, there were meetings that took place with our staff as well as the police department. As a result of, and prior to that, there was a consulting study done of every single bus route in, in our district. And those decisions were made by a group of people, not including the Board members, but a group of people involved in the administration of the district. Likewise, the instructions for the middle school and the high school came from the high school and middle school principals. So I didn't, I'm not sure I've seen the letter that you received from the high school. Have I?
But, but again...
Do you want to address this?
It was an email, it was just an email from Principal Bingert going over the first few days of school. But, but again, I ask you because this is important. When are you going to tell us about snow days, about things like that?
Hopefully before the first snow.
So, thank you, ma'am, for your comments. We do have Mrs. Bennett, our transportation supervisor, is here tonight.
We do have Mrs. Bennett, our transportation supervisor, is here tonight. So she should be able to walk you through. She has a plan. She has a plan with the snow days and so on and so forth. I know that you said you called them. You probably didn't speak to Mrs. Bennett, but we do have the privilege of having her here tonight. So you're able to, you can ask your questions offline, but as far as the snow days and stuff, I will ask Ms. Bennett, if you have a minute, if you could just come talk a little bit quickly, and I apologize, Lisa, it's kind of improv, about the idea on the podium, what your plans are with the snow days, so the public is aware of what, moving forward, how we're going to address snow days. And I would go on a microphone, if you wouldn't mind. And then if we want details, ma'am, I'll ask you to go offline to talk to Mrs. Bennett, because she is here tonight, and she can address you.
I think it warrants a thorough notice to parents, because this is something of...
She'll address that with you, so if you let her, let's talk about the snow days first, and then she'll walk you through the other steps as well.
But will you provide something in writing?
Yes, we will. So we'll let her do that first, if you wouldn't mind.
All right, each weather event, we're going to make a decision based on the weather event, whether the roads are covered. It's going to be based on how bad everything is. If we decide that there is no safe passage for the kids, we will try to get buses out to you. An email usually goes out, we've done this with the middle school and the high school in past years, telling you we'll have a bus in the morning, here's the stops they'll be at, you need to be there at this time. But that's based on each weather event, and you will get an email when we are going to provide the extra busing.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. And I think we'll talk about the additional memorandum that will go out with the specifics, so that the public has an idea, the synopsis, as far as a comprehensive plan. I think you have that, it's just a matter of articulating and sending something out.
We have the study that was done, and we can send that out.
Are you going to do this evaluation on a year-by-year basis, as far as whether or not this is a sound plan to eliminate busing for a lot of the children? Or is this something you're just going to cancel out forever?
This was a budgetary consideration this year. If our situation changes, we'll be able to reconsider.
Hi. Lisa Picarella, 1108 Washington Common. I have a third grader going into HES, and any of you who have spent a significant amount of time in schools know the hours and hours that these people are putting into our kids before school, after school, and on the weekends. When he was in kindergarten, they had to resort to work to rule, giving less than the 110 percent that they are used to doing, to make a point of getting a fair contract. And I'm very disappointed and frustrated that here we are again, going into third grade with the same situation. And I impress upon you that this is very frustrating and stressful to the children, to the teachers, and to the parents. The staff is the greatest asset that we have, and they are worth the money. Give them what they want.
Christine McAvoy, 142 Mountain View Road. Sometimes you get a beating up there, but I just want to give kudos, when kudos is earned, that at the town meeting, it was nice to see that Mrs. Haas and Mrs. Terulo, Trujulo were there to talk about pilot with the town committee. They seem to be as hard-headed as sometimes this body appears to be in their realm, so inroads have to be made somewhere. And I think it's, I think we need to keep meeting as two different town entities and the town citizens. We need to go more to both of these places, and we need to get some of this pilot money into the schools, since the building of the affordable housing in Hillsborough is ultimately getting our schools overcrowded. So I just wanted to thank you for spending a lot of time that night and all of the thoughtful comments that you had. And I congratulate you on standing firm to what you were saying that night. And I don't believe that we should be charging for clubs, we should not be charging for sports. I could see that if we were in a deficit and it was going to save jobs, those jobs have already been lost, and now there is, seems to be a surplus, and now you're just using it as a revenue stream. I don't think that's right. If I send a check in for $100 for my kid to play a specific sport, that $100 should go to that specific sport. Same with the clubs. We should not also be doing fundraisers, we should not be doing clothing drives, we should not be doing all the things that we've always done to fund all of this stuff in the district, so that it didn't cost a lot of money to run clubs and sports, and now have this extra revenue stream. And if Chromebooks really only cost $40 for an insurance, you should not be making an extra $20 on every single parent in this district. It's robbery.
Good evening. Ros Bellantrono, Boyward Way. I couldn't help but notice, as I entered the room this evening, that Hillsborough Police was represented, watching over us. I like it. I feel safer, I feel valued, as it should be for everyone in this room this evening. As a Hillsborough resident for 35 years, it is somewhat difficult for me to express my dissatisfaction with what is currently occurring in our district. I will briefly outline my major areas of concern. The elimination of courtesy busing is unacceptable. There are no non-hazardous roads in Hillsborough or anywhere else. This was true in 2002, when this was first brought to the residents of Hillsborough as a money-saving option, and it is just as true today. And to ask parents to pay $1,000 for busing is simply not fair. And please don't try to convince parents that walking to school is good exercise. It's not good when walking to school, when students have to negotiate slippery roads in winter, carry heavy backpacks, and sometimes walking far too early in the morning. These are unfair expectations being placed on our students at a time when they are already living in a world that is far too stressful. Our district offers a wonderful phys ed program, no need for an early morning trek to school. Pay to participate is equally unacceptable, as it puts additional financial stress on families who struggle to make ends meet far more than some will readily admit. There is no reason for our HEA members to have to return to work without a contract. It is not the fault of teachers that a referendum was unsuccessful. The HEA did not decide to cut funding for our school district, but yet we've heard over and over how we were warned that there would be severe consequences for a failed referendum. And the often-repeated words of warning became a reality with staff elimination, very valid parental concerns, and an aura of discontent in our township I've never witnessed before. Is this what we may continue to expect next year and the years after? This is not what Hillsborough is about. Our district is recognized as one of the best, not because of you, but because of the teachers and staff who relentlessly strive for excellence and put children first and politics last. Additionally, it has become increasingly clear that you have violated your own HIV policies. Your tactics are clearly intimidating and often border on harassment, something we all need to remember. Something we all need to remember when it's time for election. HEA members need a fair contract. Make fair happen. Settle now.
Excuse me, we have other people who haven't come up to speak once yet.
Actually, I, listen, I found the agenda, and there's something I'd like to comment on. And if you want me to wait, I can wait. My comment to the Board of Ed is, have you noticed in your board packets on retirements and resignations? This was once a district where people stayed for their career. That's not happening anymore. Just, I mean, in our middle school, we just had four people resign. Here at Autton Road, we've had two or three that I know of retire or resign. They're not staying like they used to. I don't know, they're getting better jobs in better places. And I'm not saying this is not a good place. I've made my career here, and I love Hillsborough. But to start the school year, every single contract this way, they're leaving. These young kids are not staying. Once we got the cream of the crop, that's not happening anymore. So I want to bring that to your attention. And from every day forward, BOE members, look at these. Ask, why are these people leaving? I mean, I think the writing is pretty much on the wall.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Michelle Rawls, I'm on Farm Road here in Hillsborough. I just have an incoming freshman who, and her friends, are completely, as if they're not stressed enough, but to not have busing and parents that can't bring their children. So you have kids that are completely, totally stressed about going to a brand-new high school and that whole spiel, and a good portion of them, parents work, two jobs, you know, can't bring their children to school for an orientation, is just not fair in this day and age to kids as pressure as it is. It's just not fair. I want to know how it will be addressed with this whole busing issue, that if the kids are late getting to school, in reference to waiting at the light at Autton Road, they only last for so many seconds, you've got hundreds and hundreds of kids. What's going to happen with that? How are the late's going to be accounted? If they're waiting, they've got to cross the street, they have to be safe. Okay? I am unsure they'll allow enough time. You're going to have kids darting across the light. Okay? You guys got to think of all this stuff. You got to think of minds of 14 and 18-year-olds that don't think it'll happen to them when they cross the street. The other thing is the negotiations. When was the last time you guys actually sat with these amazing sea of blue for negotiations? Okay? We're going into a brand-new school year. Was there negotiations or anything over the summer? I don't think so.
Actually, yes.
Oh.
Actually, yes.
Okay. Will you address that?
Actually, twice over the summer and five times before that.
Okay, fine.
Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Awesome. Awesome. The big thing is fees. Why are the fees, why do our money have to go to a general fund? I have no problem writing a check, none whatsoever. Will it hurt my budget? Yeah, a little bit. I will write that check to that club. Why do I have to write it to the Board of Ed when we all know that there is money in that budget to cover all of this stuff? Money goes where money should go, and it should not go to a general fund. Okay?
All revenues that come into the district go into the general fund and get dispersed among the different areas.
Okay, so when my daughter joins a club, I'll write it to that club, not a general fund?
Ultimately, it doesn't make a difference.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't, because the money, the money that is in the...
Then why do I have to pay $60 when it only costs the board $40?
I don't know that it does. There were fees determined, not based on the cost of particular clubs, but based on the cost of...
Oh, no, we're not talking about clubs, we're talking now Chromebook insurance.
Maintaining these programs so that they exist.
Okay, I'm talking about Chromebook insurance. If it costs the board $40, why do I have to pay $60? Okay, so we'll forget that, because we're not going to win. The other thing is, is this fee thing. Yeah, okay, yeah, if you have fee or reduced lunch, that kind of thing, they don't have to pay. What kid is going to go up to a teacher and embarrass themselves to say they can't afford it? That's not fair to kids who can't afford it. They're not going to join it because they can't afford it? They're not going to go up to somebody like, "Oh, I can't afford it." That's wrong to deny them a club.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. Thank you. For months, our members in the community have sought transparency from this board and administration. In fact, over 900 letters have been sent to you pertaining to your budget, your ability to restore jobs, and in general, to appeal to the board and administration to alter their disastrous course and engage in open and honest conversation about the future of our district. This request has largely been ignored. In the absence of these conversations, we have sought answers as to what brought our district to this point, but questions still remain. I realize this is not a question-and-answer session, but for the sake of those here, I hope that you will permit me these three questions. The district, Mr. Mahmood, is currently working with auditors, and I would imagine that part of this process involves looking at purchase orders and bills, determining which funds can be released or disencumbered, as I understand it. Is this correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. Goodhue, that is a correct statement.
Do you have an estimate as to how much will be released by this process?
At this stage, we are, the auditor is finishing up the audit, so we don't have an exact number. He is scheduled to complete the audit and get all those numbers together sometime in late September. So right now, we do not have a number, but we know that there is going to be monies that were freed up based on funds that were disencumbered.
I appreciate that. I would imagine that it's a substantial amount, given the POs that we generate. I would also imagine that this process involves looking at breakage or the cost difference between a retiree and a new hire. At a previous board meeting, I was told that the breakage could generate anywhere from $600,000 to $800,000 of surplus. Is that still correct?
So, Mr. Goodhue, there is significantly, let's look at past years, breakage has been in hundreds of, it has been hundreds of thousands of dollars. We don't have that number now, because obviously, we have not calculated, and the audit is still not complete, but breakage is a substantial amount of money that the board generates surplus as a result of.
And would you be comfortable that it's somewhere in the range of the estimate that I was previously given?
For this year, I don't have that comfort level, only because I just don't know, Mr. Goodhue.
I appreciate that. I was told at a previous meeting that the budget would also include a surplus of approximately $800,000. With the inclusion of disencumbered funds, released funds, as I understand them, and breakage, I believe that surplus is actually going to be closer to two times that amount, approximately $1.6 million. Is that correct?
I mean, so we, that number, Mr. Goodhue, so the response to that is that we know we're going to have a significant surplus. That number is probably in the ballpark. I can't say that, it may be even a little bit more, I'm just not able to give out that exact number at the moment. However, you're not off between, if you're asking the question is, is it a combination of what the board put in as surplus, and then that additional surplus that we generated with the disencumbrances?
Correct.
Is that the question?
Yes.
So it'd be the $800,000 that was put in, and then additional monies?
Correct.
So the answer to that is yes. Your estimate is close, but it may vary, it may be higher. I don't expect it to go lower than that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And then is there a means to infuse this money into an operational budget, possibly to restore positions, decrease fees, or any of the other things that we've incurred?
So we're actually discussing that with the auditor at the moment, to see what options we have, what the options the board has. I just, we haven't spoken to the board about it, Mr. Goodhue, so I would be uncomfortable having the discussion here without really, first of all, getting clarification from the auditor, can we do that? And then secondly, having a discussion with our board, so that they're well-informed prior to the auditor telling us if we can or can't do that.
Sure, absolutely, I appreciate that. From what I understand, and having looked at the financial regulations, there is a possibility of doing that, whether it's through a maintenance reserve or other options that exist. So as I understand it, that could happen, so I very much look forward to the results of this audit when it becomes available, and I will return to ask the question at that time. The board and administration clearly have been busy doing a great number of things, but what you have not done is reinstate any of the positions lost following the failed referendum, even though the board and the administration publicly committed to doing so at multiple meetings. I realize that this commitment was made if funds were found to do so. Like yourselves, we have been busy seeking answers to our questions. And what we, and while you have failed to reinstate positions, we've found that you have extended a Chromebook lease, resulting in the freeing of funds in the range of $200,000 to $300,000. You found, or will find, approximately $600,000 to $800,000 in breakage. You saved approximately $200,000 in a transition from a healthcare broker from one to the other. You reduced transportation for numerous students to save approximately $297,000 through the cutting of courtesy busing. You anticipate collecting over $300,000 from our students through the imposition of fees that will be considered revenue. You increased the cost of Chromebook insurance to $60 to generate $20 of revenue from every child who purchases a policy, which may or may not be legal, but is far from ethical. You imposed a fee of $100 per student to park at Hillsborough. You imposed a fee of a hundred dollars per student to park at Hillsborough High School for half the year. You publicly stated that special education was one of the major cost drivers of our budget. So understandably, this was one of the places we needed to look to determine what sort of funding you will receive from the state for that. It is my understanding, from the documents that I have received, that you have failed to disclose that you were slated to receive eight hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, excuse me, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars in extraordinary aid from the state, an increase of three hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred four dollars over last year. You anticipated a surplus of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars, but now appear to be starting the school year with at least one point six million or more, which will only grow with the infusion of revenue rung from our students, staff, and community. You have found sufficient money to raise the question of if the fees and cuts were even needed in the first place. But again, you have failed to take actions that would decrease class size, increase educational opportunity, and protect our schools. You asked the opportunity, you asked the community to trust you as you seek a second referendum, but hide a surplus that has grown twofold, and state funding for special education that has increased more than half of what you lost in the first place. You also forget that our members are residents, that your disrespect and insincerity have significantly shaken their trust of this board and administration, if not damaged it beyond repair. You have already budgeted the money to settle a fair and equitable contract, but refuse to do so as you hide behind the pretense that you are stewards of the taxpayer. Somehow, this fiscal responsibility is not a factor, as you gave unaffiliated staff members raises ranging from two point five-five or higher, often increasing six-figure salaries, while you somehow cannot find the funds or desire to locate the tenths of a percent that constitute a raise for our members. How is it, I question, that you can find a raise for every employee in this district except our members? What concessions did you demand in exchange for these? We've heard none. Rather than giving our members the respect they deserve, you needlessly spend tax dollars on attorney fees, as you put your energy into seeking inventive means to force our members to pay for your poor financial planning and lack of foresight. We stand here tonight, we stand here tonight, embroiled yet again in contentious negotiations, poised to start the school year without a contract, but also to consider another referendum, even though you have learned nothing, nothing, from either situation. The past referendum failed because of the community's distrust of the board and the vision they condone that brought our district to such a financially precarious point. Since the last referendum and finalization of the budget, nothing has changed from the board's actions or priorities. In fact, it seems that things are worsening at a troubling pace, as the board's unwillingness to be transparent has outweighed their duty to the district, and now erodes the very success that you so often celebrate. We are tired of waiting to see if your individual actions and beliefs will distinguish your record as a board member. Each of you who sit silently with the knowledge that action could be taken to correct our current disastrous course is to blame, each of you. Each of you were elected to evaluate what is best for our district, yet seemingly have surrendered independent judgment. Are you comfortable with the status of our district? Would you allow your home lives to fall into this level of disrepair? If not, then I question why you find it acceptable for our students and members. It's well past time for you to stop accepting accolades for what our students and members accomplish. It's time for you to play an active role in questioning why those achievements are being eroded and take steps to actively support our schools. Stop building surplus while tearing down what our students and staff have built. The fact that this board would willingly choose to build surplus while ignoring the opportunity to maintain our community's great public schools is simply despicable. Take actions that reflect our community's values of honesty, integrity, and a total commitment to keeping Hillsborough schools among the best in the state. Give our members the respect and stability of a fair contract. Restore positions and pledge yourselves to being a vote for the district, not for the vision that has brought us to this point. Meet the charge of your position. Our children, our community, and our members deserve it, and we will accept nothing less. Thank you.
I've been a resident of Hillsborough since 1996. I moved to this town for one reason and one reason only, and that was because of the But to sit here and place blame on these people is not right, because it wasn't just them. It was their predecessors who sat on that board, who didn't go to the two percent cap year after year when they had the opportunity to do so, and now they're stuck with it. So you talk about, when are they up for reelection? You go ahead and you vote for those other guys that are being touted by certain people on our township committee as being the right choice, and see if they go to the two percent cap, because those are the people who were here before they were. So just think about that. Currently, I went to the last board of the township committee meeting, and the township committee refused to vote to give this school district the apportion money from pilot programs.
Am I addressing you?
No, I'm addressing you, and I, and I have-
First of all, I'd ask the members of the audience to be respectful of the speaker, and I would ask the speaker to-
I will address you.
And I would ask the speaker to direct his comments to the board, please.
I will. So the township committee is currently looking to withhold those revenues, and I can assure you that Frank Mayor Delkor will, Mayor Frank Delkor will not release those funds. They have no intention of doing so. So I hope you can negotiate with them and try your best, but they have never done it before, and they're not going to start now. And the reason they won't is because it ensures their positions are held up, because they won't raise the municipal tax, and they'll put the burden on the schools to raise their tax, so they can blame them. And where do they blame them? On Facebook. They get on the community forum and they blast everybody over and over again. And the people here and other people in this township cry out and they say the same things, and they say, "Yeah, this referendum's no good, oh, this is no good," because somebody stokes the flames, and there they go. And then it fails. And what happens when it fails? You have to raise fees, you have to reinstitute, remove busing, all those types of things. That's sad, it really is. But unfortunately, I've worked in finance my entire life, and it's all about the budget. And you've got to figure out where you're going to get that money from, and it's really hard. And sometimes you have to make cuts. When it comes to contract negotiations, I've done many of them in my life, and it, and the success of any contract negotiation is just that, a negotiation and compromise. Both sides have to work on it. Am I to understand, seven times you met?
Yep.
Was that the number? Seven times? Okay. That's ridiculous. It shouldn't take more than three. Everybody should, everybody's got to give a little, and somehow, you got to come to a middle ground. For all you teachers out there, and yes, I'm addressing the teachers, you are fabulous. I have a daughter who's going for a doctorate, and I have a son who's going to be an aerospace engineer. It's not because of me, it's because of you guys. And one of the teachers is sitting on this board, and she's on that board because she cares, and my daughter adores that woman. And adores, met all the teachers. My son, not so much, but my daughter, definitely. And the only other thing I wanted to say was-
Sir, would you finish up, please?
Yeah, I am.
You've extended your time.
Last thing. Where was I? So, as Mr. Goodhue had mentioned at a previous meeting that I attended, that he questioned why the board was move, was having their meeting at Rarity Community College off-site. He accused them of not wanting to be in the same classrooms that are in a state of disrepair, and I think he mentioned mold. So you talk about bringing back teachers, but I would say the first thing to address, if you do have a surplus, is the schools. These buildings have to be maintained and repaired, and if it means a referendum again, then do it. But everybody out there has to step up and promote the schools and talk about why we need this. We have a social contract. I don't have a kid in this school, I shouldn't even be up here, right? But we have a social contract that we should all abide by. Whoever we are, we pay taxes, and we do that because somebody paid the taxes for my kids to go to school, and I've got to give back, and that's the way it works. So don't attack these people, stand up with them, and do what's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no further comment, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, excuse me, Mrs. Haas, may I ask a question? Earlier today, I had sent you an email regarding a resolution for a referendum, would now be the time to bring it up for new business or at the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would you like to do the superintendent's report?
Thank you, yes. Before I give the superintendent's report, I do want to share that I fully understand and appreciate how upset and angry and the tension that's out there in the community. And I also understand how people will wish to blame the board, blame me, blame administration. But it's important for the community and for the people out in the audience to understand a few things. Number one, New Jersey public schools are under a two percent property tax cap. That's for all public schools in New Jersey. At the same time, just healthcare alone is going up at times by double digits. We're a growing district, and yet our aid is being removed from us. The state of New Jersey feels that because the wealth of this community is increasing at such a rate, that the state is not, is providing too much aid to the Hillsborough Township Public Schools. That's the funding formula. That's the issue. And right now, we are in a situation in our district and in our community, that we're trying to reconcile two things. One is the details behind this particular budget, and the bigger issues of structurally, is it feasible, is it possible, to run a district, maintain our quality, when state aid is being removed and you have a two percent cap? Right now, we have a lot of districts in the state of New Jersey that are currently at impasse. Is that not correct, Mr. Ford, Mr. Fogarty? I think about a third of the districts are at impasse. Why is that the case? I would submit to you that the limitations on New Jersey public schools to raise enough revenue to provide reasonable increases, fair increases, is very troubling, it makes it very challenging. And then you put on top of that, that our state feels they're paying us too much state aid, it becomes ridiculous. And I would also submit to you that the state is underfunding our special education program by close to one point five million dollars a year. And the reason is, is that they fund special education based upon the average of the percent of kids that are classified in our district. We have more kids classified than the average in the state of New Jersey. Why? Because we are viewed, and rightfully so, as a center of excellence for special education. People move to our community for the quality of not only our instructional programs, but specifically for our special education programs. And the state punishes us for that. That needs to change. That's unsustainable in our state. And we're working with legislators to try to do that, we do have some traction that way. It's very important that we, we work that way. And I anticipate, and I hope, and I believe this, that we will have a settlement, and hopefully, the settlement will be sooner than later. And, and that's very important. The teachers that I've worked with for eight and a half years in this district are some of the finest educators that I've ever had the privilege to work with. Do extraordinary work every day. This is a challenge, it's going to be a difficult challenge as we go into this school year, and our kids deserve better. Our kids deserve better than what the state is doing at this point. And I just wanted to share that before I break into the superintendent's report. We have two presentations here tonight, they're very brief. The first presentation is on what used to be called the Violence and Vandalism Report. And here tonight, to walk us through the report, which is now called the Student Safety Data System Report, is our Director of Guidance, Ms. Jessica Smedley.
Good evening. So, projected up here, I know it's hard to see in the audience, but we do have it projected. The report is split into two six-month increments, so our first half of last school year, and then this last six months that we just had. So I just want to point out a few changes to the report from prior years. The numbers are a little bit higher than what we've seen particularly at the high school and the middle school with regards to substances, and we attribute that to the change in our policy about vaping that took place in this school year. So the other notable difference is that the state made the decision in this year to require all school districts to report both in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. So when doing an analysis year to year, there was a, a steep increase. Still, when you consider our total population at, at our larger schools, it's, we still have a very low number overall, and we're not seeing too much of things. But in-school suspension has certainly changed the game a little bit, and in-school suspension is not necessarily a, a result of a violent or a violent act or an act of vandalism, but could be something, for example, at the high school, six of those in-school suspension incidents were due to students not reporting for Saturday detention, so they're not necessarily tied to it, but the state definition requires that we report that out. So that would, that attributes for most of the increase. We do have on the report, if you could scroll down just a little bit, sort of what the, what the incidents mean, so violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, and HIB, which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying confirmed, what the different violence segments are, the vandalism, and these are unduplicated counts, so they are total incidents for each school. And then by HIB alleged, how many times kids were removed, so that would be our in-school and out-of-school suspension. The last segment down on the lower left-hand corner are our trainings and programs. So we do work very proactively with the school counselors, the school administration, our teachers and staff, work to maintain climate, school climate and safety committees. We have several programs through the, through classroom guidance lessons at our, our elementary schools, through character education programs, through our substance abuse prevention programs at the middle school and high school, peer mentoring programs, and staff-to-student mentoring programs. So you can see by school, the number of trainings completed during the school year and the number of programs, so preventative programs and first-tier early intervention programs.
Thank you, Ms. Smedley. Are there any questions from the board? Stuart Gillett.
Uh, thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Smedley, for the report. I just wanted, for the benefit of the, of the board and public, the difference between the vaping policy we used to have is that in previous years, before we enacted the policy about a year ago, we trade, we treated vaping in school the same way as we treat smoking in school. But as we know now, the vaping devices can't be used to deliver drugs, so we now treat the vaping device as a paraphernalia, drug paraphernalia, so it goes under the same category as that. So before, on this report, we wouldn't see the, it would just be like smoking, if we, if we had vapors. Now, we treat it differently, so that, so that's what Ms. Smedley was referring to when she saw that one line go up for drug use.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just address that?
Yes.
This is anecdotal, because I, you know, I taught at the high school, but a lot of teachers are saying it's very difficult to, to catch kids vaping, and, but it's a very, very serious concern that they have, and, and also, as a member on the municipal lines, it's also a concern that we have regarding vaping and just how to address it. I mean, it's great that we're, we, you know, changed the, the consideration of it, but the, how easy it is for the kids to get away with it in spite of the teachers' best efforts is really troubling.
The device.
Well, I, I, I find this curious, because way back, you know, like in nineteen eighty, I think it was, or maybe it was even earlier, there was a problem at the high school with marijuana being smoked on school grounds during the school day, and they used, believe it or not, you know, nineteen eighty-era hidden cameras, and were able to record for a few weeks, and made one sweeping, like, roundup of fifty or sixty kids in one, on one morning. Now, I don't know how they could do that with, like, nineteen eighties, like, Betamax, and we can't figure out how to- figure out how to find some kids today in 2019, you know, like fifty, forty years later. So I, I, I agree with Ms. Statz, though. I think we can, we could do better.
Well, I can't imagine that they had cameras in the bathrooms.
Well.
If they did, there's no way they could get away with it now.
I think it's more than just the bathrooms, though.
Well, and, well, like I said, I mean, you know, uh, marijuana is, is very, back then especially, had a very distinct smell, so I heard. And today, with vaping, it's like that. It's very, very hard to catch.
Thank you, Mrs. Smedley. Appreciate it. Next, we have a presentation from Mike Wozni, who's our architect of record from EI Architects and Associates, to discuss our facility needs moving forward here. And, uh, I will advance your PowerPoint for you.
Thank you, and good evening. Also from EI Associates is Brian Donnelly with me. He's the director of our educational facilities development. So what I'd like to talk about tonight is, uh, a little bit of background on your facilities and what we've done since we've been in the district. We've observed that your, your schools, um, you know, are varying age. We've got a list up there and, you know, Hillsborough Elementary School, seventy years old. Several of the elementary schools are fifty to sixty years old. The high school, fifty years old. This building is your newest building, and it's already over twenty years old. So you've got aging facilities. Certainly, you've got additions that have been put onto several of these buildings, which makes maintenance a little bit more complicated because you've got different building systems in each of those additions, different roof systems, mechanical systems, et cetera. So when you hear talk of, um, you know, you've replaced a certain system in a building, it may be just in a certain section of that building. Might be the original building or a subsequent addition. And you've been maintaining the buildings through ARAMAC, um, you know, and your annual budget. And what we've seen in districts all across the state that it's difficult to do that, you know, especially as the buildings, um, age. So ARAMAC prepared a, a facility assessment in February of last year, and we reviewed that assessment. So you've got the folks who are maintaining your building, and you've got your architects and engineers, um, you know, teaming up to identify the needs and the condition of your existing buildings. And the conclusion is basically that the maintenance, maintenance of the facilities, coupled with the improvements that you want to do with respect to energy efficiency, indoor air quality and security, requires a larger investment beyond what you're putting into the buildings in your annual maintenance budget. So over the past year, we've been working with the board to look at the various deficiencies throughout the, the district and prioritize those needs so that we can trim down the course, the costs from the original assessment between the ARAMAC report and our assessment of that report. So we've, uh, come up with a list of projects, so I'm going to go through them, starting on the next slide, but I just want to point out that all of this work is work on your existing school facilities. Uh, this does not address board of ed offices. It doesn't address the buildings and grounds building, doesn't address ball fields or any new facilities or programs. This is all just maintenance of your existing school facilities. So we broke it down into different categories. Uh, first mechanically, uh, again, you've done mechanical work over the years, but you still have some equipment that's original to the construction of the buildings fifty, sixty, seventy years ago. So a lot of this equipment has exceeded its serviceable life. You've got unit ventilators that are critical to the indoor air quality of your classrooms that are, are old, and it's, it's not just the fact that they're not energy efficient, but you can't find parts to, to repair a lot of this equipment. So you've got boilers, you've got heat pumps, you've got, um, you know, hot water heaters and piping. The next slide is electrical work. Again, you've done lighting upgrades, but there's still emergency lighting and exit lighting that, um, you know, they're dim, they don't meet current, uh, you know, levels of recommended, recommended light levels, so we're looking to replace all of that. The next slide is, uh, exteriors of the buildings. You've got masonry work, you've got, uh, stucco, which is called EPIS. It's a synthetic type of sc- stucco that has got an insulation and a, uh, a finish, harder finish on it. A lot of times, it's just not hard enough. Uh, you can see, uh, on this school building, you can see the pockmarks from the lacrosse balls. And once that skin is punctured, uh, either through, you know, just natural cracking or through, you know, uh, the kinds of deterioration, you have water infiltration. And then the insulation behind that gets saturated, and then you've got, uh, you know, issues with moisture inside the building. Same thing with the, the joints in the masonry. When that caulking dries out, you've got water infiltration. That causes moisture coming into the buildings. On the next slide, interiors, uh, the shot on the upper left corner is the, uh, the floor of the boiler room at Hillsborough Elementary School. It's rusted out, again, from a lot of moisture below the building. It's, it, it needs to be repaired or replaced. Uh, we've got ceilings, we've got interior doors that are original to the building that don't have handicap hardware. They have, um, wired glass, which is not used in schools anymore. So they're from a point of deterioration and, um, you know, coming up to current code, codes, all of these items are very necessary. Some just speak for themselves, toilet partitions are rusted. Okay, next slide, roofs. Again, you've been replacing roofs, um, over periods of time, but even this building, it's twenty years old, its, its roof is reaching its life expectancy. So we're replacing the roof here at Autton Road, we're replacing the roof at, uh, the middle school. We're recommending replacing portions of the roof at the high school. It would be the 500 wing, which, again, twenty years old. The rear sections of Woods Road and Wood Fern, both, um, are, you know, not the oldest parts of the building, but again, those roofs need to be replaced. The, the pictures speak for themselves. The seams are coming apart, and you can see the bottom left-hand corner, the middle school, there've been a lot of repairs on that roof, and the seams are still splitting. So this is all very necessary work. Next slide is paving. Uh, again, this is a perfect example of the longer you wait, the more expensive it's going to be to take care of these items. If it's just simple cracking, you can often just do a, a mill and, of the top coat and replacing that. If the cracking gets more extensive, like you see in these pictures, and you start to see, um, some of the aggregate and the lower, the base course cracking, then you've got to do what's called a full-depth replacement, where you've got to dig out the entire system all the way down to, uh, the grade, the ground below it. And that's obviously many times more expensive than just a mill and replace. So, uh, paving, um, at virtually all the schools, I think the next slide, uh, you know, says more of the same. You see cracking around, um, catch basins, that can be drainage issues. So, uh, the next slide is, is sidewalks, concrete work, sidewalks and curbing. And again, uh, it's not just, you know, areas that aren't utilized frequently. These, uh, most of these pictures I took are in the front of the buildings. So you've got tripping hazards right where, you know, students and visitors are coming and going from the school. Next slide just, uh, shows more of that. And in some cases, uh, again, you see ponding that's in, uh, the paved areas, that's, those are drainage issues that need to be addressed along with just simple repaving portions. On the next slide, um, air conditioning. The school has been going through a program of incrementally, um, air conditioning, uh, classrooms throughout the district. But they've been doing that in the most cost-effective way, which is putting in window units. But the problem with the window units are, they are not the most energy-efficient way of air conditioning a room. You can get a very energy-efficient window unit, but still, it's not, um, the same as having a more, um, permanent solution to air conditioning. Window units are also noisier than a permanent air conditioning solution. They take up daylight. They're taking up a window. And as you do these projects incrementally, you're not getting any state aid. If you have a referendum, you can get debt service relief aid, and you can finish off air conditioning, the rest of the classrooms in the district that are not currently air-conditioned. Also, having a permanent solution to air conditioning, uh, as opposed to a window unit, is better at reducing the humidity that's in the, in the classrooms. And obviously, humidity reduces your risk of having mold in the classrooms. And the final category is security. What's been identified is, uh, secure vestibules at every school. Uh, you've got, uh, pairs of doors, so you've got, you do have vestibules, but they're not what we consider to be a secure vestibule, um, that has a transaction window. There's a, a picture of the, a typical transaction window in the bottom right-hand corner. That would be in each vestibule so that there could be somebody who can address visitors. They would still buzz somebody into that vestibule. They would not have access to the rest of the building until they are processed with the driver's license or some, some other form of, of identification. So that's another very important thing to do. So, again, there, um, these are all very serious needs, uh, the process and timeline. We currently have all these projects submitted to the Department of, of, uh, Education. I, I spoke with them today. Uh, there's a very good chance that these projects will be approved as early as tomorrow. And I was informed that all these projects are deemed eligible for state aid. So the state considers that 40%. Um, you'll have to talk to your bond counsel to see exactly how that translates, um, when they do all the mathematical formulas, but, um, all this work is eligible for state aid. So you should be receiving preliminary eligible cost letters from, uh, the Department of Education as early as tomorrow. Uh, the board has some time to, to review that and then, uh, plan accordingly for a future referendum. That state aid is only available if you have a referendum and you bond for this work. If it comes out of your annual budget, there is no state aid available for this kind of work. So that's important to note. So moving forward, if you have a successful referendum, um, then we would do the detailed design of these projects and go out to bid and do most of this work, and it'll all be accomplished during summertime. Now, you may want to stagger this over, you know, two or more summers so that you don't disrupt summer programs, but we should be able to get most of this work done during the summertime so we're not disrupting, uh, activities in, in the classroom during the school year. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions, Greg?
Um, well, thank you. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Wozni and everyone from EI, uh, for working on this project. As, as Mike indicated, start off with a report from Aramark, who was our contracted maintenance company for several years. Uh, they did a comprehensive, um, analysis, but it was, it was very broad, included, it was, it would, it would have been very expensive to do everything. We needed, uh, another set of eyes on it, and that's what Mike and his team provided for this. Uh, these are truly the most, the highest priority items. One, now, having said that, I'll, I'll throw out that, um, you did mention that this doesn't include any of the athletic facilities at all. I, I just have to say, the high school track is in very, very poor condition. We tried for, for a couple of years now to get that done. We thought we were going to be able to do it. The estimate, uh, to repair it doubled to something like $350,000. We thought we could do it for about $150,000. We were just going to do it. That was about, over two years ago. It doubled. We felt that we couldn't do that unless we added it into some sort of project. Uh, somewhere along the way over the past year that we've been working on this, that decision was made to not include any of the athletic facilities because those weren't the highest priority. But I'll tell you, so many people use the track, not just the athletes, the high school for phys ed, I think they're out there sometimes. Our community at large uses the track, Special Olympics uses the track, the Junior Raiders, which is a, a private recreational club for kids, uses the track. And it, it's really, it, it's in tough shape. So I just want to throw that in there so that you'll, you'll see, this, these are the highest priority items. And, uh, I, I endorse, I, you know, I endorse getting these done. Uh, when you looked at the first, the slide and you saw the age of our schools, one thing you might not have picked up on is that all the schools were built about ten years apart. The oldest is now seventy years old, then you had some sixty, fifty, forty, thirty, and twenty. Every time we built a school here or made a major addition to a school, we had a referendum, issued bonds, and that those bonds also included money for other needed maintenance projects around different schools. So say you were building one school, but you also added into that project, you know, an upgrade or, or added a different school. We haven't done anything in twenty years. So we haven't built a new school. We haven't built a new addition. We've had no major building project in twenty years. Therefore, all of the maintenance that would have been added on to other projects has been deferred for twenty years now. And now, really, it's come time now to do the maintenance projects, to restore the schools to the way they were twenty years ago. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question. So there's no chance we could have this as a referendum in November?
If, if you received your PEC letter within the next couple of days and had a, you need a board resolution. So if you had a, a special board meeting later this week or next week, you need to, for a November referendum, you would have to notify the county board of elections by, uh, September 6th, which is a week from Friday.
Only asked because I was looking at what was up there. So, but that's just a suggestion.
Mike, does the, um, the township financial officer also had, also is allowed to have some time with that, too? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
So we, we could get the letters tomorrow. That, that goes, I think, to the township financial officer for, it's, it's customary to give them a week, if you had a week. You know, that would be the customary thing. I don't know if they would take a whole, if you'd take a whole week or what would happen, but there is another, um, layer between us and, you know, a special meeting.
I mean, actually, we don't even know if they're in because this upcoming week is Labor Day weekend week, and a lot of people just take vacation that time. So in any case, it'll be a very tight schedule and, uh, you know.
It's going to be sixty days before the election, so you would have to have a decision by Thursday or Friday, so there are significant topics to consider.
There's some challenges.
When, with, when I first got wind of all this, I, I, it just seemed like it was very, very doable to have it done by, by November, you know, to have it for a November referendum. So I, I gotta say, I'm disappointed.
Yeah, I think we're all disappointed.
You know, because I, I have concerns about having.
The pet letters are not within our ability to control. We send, I mean, I signed over a hundred fifty pieces of paper. They were sent in promptly. The State Department of Education does what they do, and unfortunately, we thought they would be able to process it sooner than they, in fact, were able to.
I can tell you that recently, um, within, about a month ago, the Department of Education announced that all school districts had to do a major update to the long-range facility plan to have any kind of capital project done. So there are a lot of school districts that are trying to do work this summer that needed to, and they just found out about it within the past month or so, that they had to do a major update of the long-range facility plan. There are only four plan reviewers down at the state now. So they, they really got inundated in the last couple of months with all that extra work on top of being, um, short-staffed. So that, that's really the reason why, um, you know, and, and again, we were relying on them to expedite the review, and we really have no control over that. We knew it was possible, but it was not, you know, again, there's.
So are you saying we, we were expecting it to take maybe, we were hoping for it to take less time than normal?
Right. What's normal, right. What's normal, well, I shouldn't say normal. They, they're allowed ninety days. That's three months. We have had projects approved in a matter of weeks, and we've had several approved in a matter of a month or so. Okay, so, um, but coupled with this new requirement of having to have the, uh, long-range facility plan update for everybody, it's not just people going for a referendum, it's, it's any, you know, so again, the people who are doing projects this summer had to have their long-range facility plan updated, which means the plan reviewer had to not just approve the project applications, but approve the long-range facility plans as well. And, and as well as Hillsborough. So that, that's what they were doing. They were doing more than just a project application. They're doing, uh, the update of the long-range facility plan.
Thank you.
So I, I, may I make a comment? I don't even know where to start with my disappointment and being, I mean, when I saw, actually, Mrs. Stats pointed out, I did not see the December 10th date up there. I thought we were still talking about November 5th and that we would have a special meeting. Is that still possible for us if the paperwork comes in, that we have a special meeting so that we can still put this facility's... so that we can still put this facilities referendum on the ballot for November? I really think that for something as large, I mean, we're talking about, is it still $35 million that we're asking for? For us to, to ask it at an off-election just seems, I'm not really sure the word I'm looking for, but, but basically, I really think that with the November election, you will have the larger, the larger, largest turnout that you can expect, and especially for a project of this scale, and especially with respect to, as we'd heard tonight, the lack of trust of the community in us. I mean, like, honestly, like, when, I appreciate Mr. Bajado when he'd said, like, that we, I'm not sure exactly what he said, but basically, what I wanted to say is, the nine of us are basically the community. I mean, we are elected to represent the community and, and to, to really do what's best for the children. We don't have any special educational background or any special qualifications to be up here. We are, are taking the guidance of our professionals and trying to interpret what the community wants. And from what I hear, the community wants us to be more open and just, and basically, even if it's ugly, just to say, you know what, we had to postpone doing all these projects because of, you know, reason A, B, and C, but you know what, we really need this infrastructure referendum, it's critical, but to put it in December just basically says, I feel it says to the community, like, well, we kind of just, you know, we couldn't make this date, so we kind of slipped it under the rug. I'm, I'm just so frustrated, and I'm in support of this referendum.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's a little unfair because we did, the district did our job and sent it to the state. I don't know how much closer I could get, I'm going to be sucking on this thing if I get any closer. So, I, I think that is a little unfair. We all have the goal of a November referendum. That is not possible unless we get something in the next couple of days and the township expedites their review. I'm willing to set a date next week for a special meeting if, in fact, that happens, but the likelihood is, you know, I was informed of this, I think, on Friday by the superintendent. You know, we were hoping it was going to be in next week so that we could actually approve the language. We can't approve language until we know the PEC, get the PEC letter and understand what we're actually asking for based on how much state aid we get. So, I, I don't want to put the blame, as so much has happened tonight, on the administration or this board. We did our job, the state has not done theirs. So, I, I really hesitate to, to let that stand. I'll just stop there.
Okay. I, I would agree with Dr. Swanson as far as that's concerned. It's a double-edged sword, and quite honestly, our legal counsel just reminded me that we have to get the approval of two townships, Hillsborough and Millstone. And as you all know, Millstone may not meet quite as often as people in Hillsborough do, so we have to deal with that as well. So, the double-edged sword is, do we have a special meeting and rush this through and then be accused of not being transparent and providing enough information to the community, or do we take our time and do it properly and get information out to the community that they could digest and make sure that we and everybody in the community understands the benefit of doing this referendum, especially by virtue of the fact that we would be getting substantial reimbursement from the state, which is what the PEC letters are all about. We shouldn't be even talking about numbers. The numbers that, you know, we are talking about for this referendum are not established without those PEC letters. And if people could see the value in getting this through with the kind of funding that would be available from the state, it would be much better than taking a chance and waiting till next November, which is also an option, and then having to go through the process again and hoping that the state has money for the PEC, you know, for, for their contribution. So, I think there are a lot of things to be concerned about in this situation. I happen to be an election junkie, and I could also tell you that for the last, the last two four-year cycles, when you have an assembly candidacy at the top of a November ticket, the turnouts in Hillsborough have been under the 25 percent that we received for our referendum last March. So, in fact, November will not be the highest turnout if it goes as it has for the last two assembly top tickets. So, I think we have a lot to think about. I'm happy to hear any other opinions from other board members about this, but I think that, you know, we have to be very careful in what we do and not let the community feel they're being rushed into something with, without enough information. So, yes, November was an important goal, but at this point, I'm wondering at all whether it's doable. I mean, we are available to meet if it makes sense to do so, so.
Ms. Haas, I do appreciate what you said about the November election because I, I think I've been pretty straightforward that I'm really gung-ho about if we do have a referendum, I would want it in, in November, but you do make a good point, and, and at least for me, it's a compelling point about, you know, the low percentage turnout for, you know, an election like this year. But in the full, in the spirit of, well, transparency, we would have to pay for a referendum that would occur in, in December, correct?
Yes. However, since our last referendum, there was a new clerk's office decision. A lot of mail-in ballots were mailed at the last, at the, for, for our last referendum that, as a matter of fact, did not need to be mailed, and that is a large part of the expense. The mailing of ballots was based on everybody who had requested a mail-in ballot at the time, and I'm not an expert on this, but my understanding is that the current status of that is that that only applies to people who voted in the 2016 election, but not the 2017 and 18 elections who might have requested a ballot. So, I think, I think that's.
So, you're saying the clerk has advised that, that their costs are going to be less because of something to do with mail-in ballots, the cost to mail out ballots?
Right.
So, it won't be as, quite as much as it has been in the past for an off-month election?
Right.
Okay.
My biggest concern is the communication to the public. And if we do this in such a way, we're going to be back to where we were before. I think we need to communicate to the community so they're really familiar with what's going on and when it's going to happen. I think you said November, someone said, did you say that, Jane?
That's, I believe that was the original consideration, a November one.
I just think we need to get more information out to the public. I think they need, they need to be more informed and know exactly what's going on.
And, did you want to make a comment about the communication? Because I know you've been working on that kind of proposal.
I, I spoke to the Department of Education earlier today, so, and again, I know I've been saying this for the last couple of weeks, but, you know, it sounds like, you know, it could be as, you know, tomorrow, you know, that the PEC letters would come in.
Give us a call.
It's called the PEC letter, it's preliminary eligible cost. It is basically, you know, states what projects are eligible for state aid and which are not. I was told verbally by the plan reviewer, because she reviewed, the projects are reviewed, there's just a couple of minor things, and to get a signature on those letters, and, then it's complete, it'll be emailed out. But that letter is very important because it determines how much state aid is available for these projects.
And how long are those PEC letters good for?
I believe several years. I would have to check on that.
Oh, I thought you said months. Okay.
That they're, no, I, I mean, they're, you know, it's just, just like going for any other DOE approval, you've got some time to implement the project. When they had the rods program, I know we had many projects that were three, even four years after those project approvals were given out to the districts.
And we do, we do need the repairs, so, that's, that's for sure.
Do we have a drop-dead deadline as to when we would have to meet in order to make the September 6th deadline? Like, if we got the letter tomorrow, could we meet on, no, we can't because we need two days' notice? So, like, if we got the letter tomorrow, could we meet on Thursday?
It has to go to township committee. Township committee has to.
No, but first, we have to pass the resolution. No?
No.
We have to pass the wording.
I think they review the letters, right? Am I wrong? Am I wrong, Mike? The township committee or township financial officer reviews the PEC letters.
I believe you get the information from the townships before the resolution is drafted by your bond counsel. So, it, you know, a couple of things. The PEC letter comes in, you go to, to get the information from the municipalities, the bond counsel writes up the, or, oh, she's got the wording of the resolution, so it's really just plugging in the numbers. And then, in my opinion, I would wait until that, to see if the PEC letters come in tomorrow to, to schedule a meeting and.
Is it possible to reach out to the, whoever the personnel, appropriate personnel would be for the Hillsborough Township and also Millstone? Fingers crossed, anticipation that we get this and try to, you know, get ahold of them now to give them a heads-up about this coming?
Well, that's well over the board.
Well, I don't think, I don't, look, if we get it, if we get the letters tomorrow or the next day, they immediately go to the township financial officer. I don't know if they, I guess you could give them a heads-up. I think they know that we're, they're working on this, I think.
And the ballot, the ballot question has to be rewritten by our bond counsel.
Yeah, and, and Millstone financial officer, whoever that is, I don't know who does that for them.
Yeah, no idea.
They don't have a full-time employee.
Correct.
Doing that. I don't, I don't, I don't know who that is.
Correct. I don't either.
It's possible. It's possible, but we, but again, the time constraints are significant, and all of those moving parts would have, all of those moving parts would have to be in place in order for you to schedule a special meeting before next Thursday. So, if those preliminary eligible costs come in tomorrow and they are sent to the CFOs for Hillsborough and for Millstone with a request that they get back to us immediately, then it's possible. But again, you would have to meet before next Thursday in order to, in order to meet the November ballot deadline.
So, so are you saying that the resolution that this board passes is the last step in getting it on the ballot?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
What's that?
So, could we just set a meeting for Thursday, September 5th?
The first day of school, conveniently.
Well, I think there's three of us who have kids on, I mean, so if the three of us are available, like, I assume that everybody else might, oh, true. But what, so what I'm proposing is, could we schedule a tentative meeting, or could we schedule a meeting for that day and just cancel it so that way at least the people who are here know that that's what our plan is? If we don't get the PEC letter, or we get the PEC letter and we can't get the CFOs to do their stuff, then we can just cancel it, but at least it's noticed.
And then we have less than two months to do a communication campaign.
But that was the plan anyway. I mean, if we were going to approve it tonight on August 26th, that's one and a half weeks difference between two months.
Well, right now, we don't even have a number, nor do we have the financing straightened out. Yes, Lisa?
Kind of the point that I wanted to try to make in this, maybe, you know, shooting myself in the foot and kind of being devil's advocate here, but I think going through this and doing all of this right now when the contracts aren't settled, I don't think we're going to get the support from the community or other ways, and, and I really think we are going to need all the support we can get. And I think that the more time we have on this, but I think we need to honestly settle the contracts. I mean, I'm not a part of it, so I can't really help in that situation, but I think if we want better support and better transparency and better communication, I think we need to use all of our resources, which our teachers and parents and community are part of it. I, I think we shouldn't do anything until that's at least one priority off of our plate.
I would agree with that as well.
So, I, maybe Mike could, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but in your opinion, even if, if the, if the referendum happened in December or even in January for some reason, would that still give enough time to finalize the plans, put the bids out for summer work to begin? I want to know how late, you know, that, that doesn't jeopardize summer work?
No, it doesn't, it wouldn't jeopardize our design or bidding or construction schedule. Again, I, I think it's wise to phase this out over at least two summers, just from a practical standpoint, and to have, you know, the right bid packages for contractors, but a month is not going to make any difference.
There does come a time, there does come a point, I think, in the spring, though, if you had like a March referendum and then, then.
A March referendum would be too late to do the design work, bid it, and have summer work done.
So, there is some, but, but December doesn't fall into that category. We'd still, and also bidding in January or February, whenever the bids would go out, that's a favorable time for us to bid on projects like this for the summer, would you say?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm leaving the witness a little bit there, I knew the answer.
Okay, so, any other input from the board?
Let's wait and find out.
How do we, how do we make it a tentative meeting? Do we have to make it by the board now at a board meeting? It's, we've gone both ways traditionally. We've, we've also just, you know, board president has also just emailed us and said we need a meeting by email. How do we have to do that, Steve?
So, at this point, the board would, by majority vote, the board would have to schedule that meeting.
We would have to, we can't, we couldn't do it like by email three days, okay, just making sure.
If you're going to schedule.
I like your way better. I like that way better, better.
This is not emergent, so it can't be.
Yeah, right, right, right.
It's not, it's not special because we're sitting here talking about it, so it needs to be informed.
Right, it's not emergent, it's great.
On the Wednesday, Thursday? All right, so then I make a motion that we schedule a special meeting of the Board of Education for.
Wednesday?
Would you prefer Wednesday, would you prefer Wednesday, September 4th? September the 4th for the sole purpose of approving a resolution?
I'll second it.
I have a real problem with doing that on the night before school starts. You know, I think that's an extremely busy night for our public.
It's going to be tough for me.
Yeah, and, you know.
If my kid's old, it doesn't matter.
But, yeah.
But back-to-school nights and everything else, I don't think a week later is.
There is a back-to-school night that night. There are back-to-school nights every other night.
For weeks, so.
Yes.
There's no good, I mean, if we use that as the basis, there's no good time, let's not have a meeting. We need a meeting, we aren't going to find a perfect date for the public, we take the best date we can based on the calendar we have. That's my recommendation.
Well, September 3rd is another option. I mean, honestly, this stuff has to get to the clerk's office as well, and it shouldn't be done on Friday night at 4:00 of September 6th.
But now you're, now you're hamstringing the CFOs of the respective, respective townships to get their work done.
Well, somebody's getting hamstrung in any of these scenarios.
And, and also, we're assuming that the PEC letters come tomorrow. What if the PEC letters come Thursday? We still could, in theory, get the CFOs to review them, but every day closer to now that we get cuts into time to receive the PEC letters and time for the CFOs to review. So, to me, the best bet is the latest we can do it and still make, make the six if, if it works out. Otherwise, you know, we're just hurting our own chances if we cut it shorter.
Also, it's, it's, now, look, it's also, I like the, I like the idea of a November referendum. I want, I want the most participation, but Judy, you're right, it's a difference between 25 percent and 18 percent, not 50 and 18, turnout, because it's not, it's not one of those, it's not a presidential year, no governor, no US senator, anything like that. So, that's not as big a consideration, but also now you're going to have a special meeting, special meeting, which is not on anyone's calendar in the public.
Right.
And, and they would want, they're going to want to, public's going to want to weigh in once they know what the numbers are.
Yep.
They're going to want to come to that meeting. I don't know, it's going to be tough.
If we want a November. If we want a November referendum, I don't see any other way to get there, or we just abandon November. But if you want November, this is the only way to accomplish that. And, and again, there's no guarantees, the PEC letters may not come in. I'm just saying, if our goal is November, we don't have a lot of choices, right? We have a week and a half at, at the most. And so if we want November, that dictates what our timeframe is. If we're not willing to do that, then fine, I'm, I'm not sure December's a great time for referendum. I think March is a better time than December with the holidays, but it is what it is. If we're going to go November, then we have a very limited set of choices.
It's up to Ted.
Yes.
I'm in holiday mood by then.
I think we're in a catch-22 here.
Yes.
If we, if we schedule a special meeting next week to try to move for a November election or referendum, then we will be accused of adding a special meeting and not being transparent and giving the, the people time to digest and come, especially if it's the night before the first night of school or the first night of school, which I think are our two choices. By the way, neither of which, I will be away on business next week, all next week, so I can't attend any of them. I'm happy to vote yes for anything that you guys decide. But the alternative is, we, we give it a month, hopefully settle the contract, which I believe, I agree with you that it is...
And that should be our number-one priority right now.
It is useful to, to do that first. And then, I actually think we'd be better off just shooting for January if that is still permissible within the timeline. Because I, I think that gives us time to educate people. I personally, I love the pictures, thank you, Mike, but I also think that we should have guided tours of, of the schools. Because, you know, you see that, but if you walk through the schools, I haven't been, you know, a parent in the school, in some of the elementary schools for many years. I went to Triangle School Autism Awareness Day and walked through that school and was shocked at some of the things that I saw. My kids went there for six years. So, I mean, I do think that we have a lot of education to do with our public. A lot of the things that I heard tonight was misinformation we have to correct. And so I, you know, my vote would be that we, we give transparency a shot, even if we get accused of doing a January referendum that people wouldn't show up for even though. And I think your point exactly is that we get poor election in, in the, in the off-years, we get poor election attendance. So we did get better, and if we communicate with people, we may be able to get more people out and hopefully more people who would vote yes because they realize that our schools are in desperate need of not updates, but maintenance. I think that is a, a real important message that we have to give. So I am, I'm willing to, to schedule something next week. I don't think, I think we're not going to be able to make that timeline anyway, but I think we will be, one way or the other, accused of not being transparent. So, you know, it's unfortunate.
The motion, and, can you repeat the motion on the table?
Sure, the motion is to have a meeting on September 4th for the sole purpose of voting on the referendum that would be held in November.
Discussion?
Yeah. If not, we deal roll call.
Do we have, do we have five people who will be able to be here? Because we just heard one will not, and I will not. Are you gone?
No, I'm available, you asked, we have five people who would be available, so I'm answering in the positive.
How many people are available for this meeting?
What's the date again, please, repeat it?
September 4th.
Which is the Wednesday night, the 4th? The night before school starts.
So we don't even have a quorum? One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
And is it required that we have five yes votes?
Yeah, it is.
So you not only need five people, but you need five people willing to vote yes for whatever the language is, just, just saying.
I keep thinking back to what was said earlier this evening, and I really don't feel like we have the support of the public, which is sad, because I've lived in this community for 30 years, and I always thought that education was the backbone of this community. And seeing people torn apart by issues that were discussed, I just have a feeling the referendum is not going to be a straight shot, just like everything else that's gone by the wayside when we try to do something. So I think I would be willing to come to a meeting, but I think it's going to be just another futile attempt to try and move things forward when the public is not going to be understanding what it is we're doing.
I agree.
I agree with that, but I can be here on the 4th. So are you thinking, are you hopeful that, at least hopeful, though, that with more time, that would improve?
I'm definitely hopeful that we can do some communication that is positive and that raises the community to a level where it should be and should have been all along.
And, and time would, would help with that achievement?
I would hope that time to get out the information and explain what it is that we're asking for in, in plain terms so that everyone understands the age of our buildings and the need of those things. You know, short of buying duct tape for this district, I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, no, I, I have to agree. I, I think it's just not enough time to educate and to get the support of the community. So I, I, I don't want to rush this because I think we're going to be accused of trying to rush things through, not being transparent, and especially asking for money when contracts aren't settled. Again, I, I just don't see this as being something that is going to be a positive outcome. And I think if we're going to make some changes and make, not make the same mistakes, even though I wasn't really a part of it at that point, I don't, I don't know what, you know, transpired, but I think that we need to really cross our Ts and dot our Is and really be, just get the, all the information out as, as much as we can. And as much as I am in support of the referendum, I, I don't want people to think that I'm not. I think, you know, as a teacher, too, the facilities and security is, you know, a, a top priority. I just think we need to really get the communications going and getting all the information out and making sure that everybody is well-educated and knows what is happening. And I just don't think November is enough time.
So I think that if, if we had the PEC letters a week or so ago as we expected, then we would have been discussing that at this meeting, it would have been on the agenda on a regularly scheduled meeting.
Right.
So people could have seen it on the agenda, come to the meeting if they wanted to speak about it or hear about it. I just, I just, I think it's difficult to now put it on a special meeting that's not on anyone's calendar, that people, we'll try to get the word out, but it, people are, it's, you know, two days before school starts. The night before school starts, the night of the first night of school. I, I, I think, you know, I, I don't want to do this out of a, "It's unfortunate, we didn't get the letters." Life, life happens, I don't know what he's supposed to say, and there's another word, I think? But it happens, right?
So, so may I make a few comments? So I, I hear what everyone's saying, and I understand, and I respect that. But what I'm actually hearing is, is the argument about this November 2019 being an off-election. I mean, it's not really off, but it's not the governorship, it's not Senate. So November 2020 is the presidential election, so that's going to have a huge turnout. And I hate to postpone the infrastructure at, you know, to that, but it sounds to me, from what everyone's kind of saying, is that we need time to repair the trust in the community, in us, we need to settle the HGE contract. I also am hopeful that we'll settle sooner rather than later. However, I would propose, as just an idea, that if we were to go out in November 2020, we would do a com, okay, we would do a comprehensive proposal with the high school that the strategic plan had talked about, Part 1. Part 2, infrastructure proposal, Part 3, any other things that the board thinks is important. So with that, I will, with my parliamentary motions guide, move to, move that the motion be postponed indefinitely, which basically means I killed a made motion.
Okay, could you do that?
Yeah.
It's her motion.
And it does not, it needs a second.
Second.
All in favor? Do we need a roll call?
With no discussion.
Not because I'm shutting it down, that's Robert's.
We've had enough, it's cool. So on a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Indefinitely.
The previous motion. Right?
Yeah. Am I ready? Oh, there's no discussion, so I may have a roll, may I do a roll call?
Go.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris? Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan? Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Eel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we are finally up to policies and regulations requiring annual review.
Actually, before we do that, we do have two administrative appointments that I'm very excited and proud to share with the board and the community. We have, for a generation, have privatized the leadership in our Buildings and Grounds Department. The board has, and it's with great appreciation that you've done this, we're going to bring it back in-house. So that started with Mr. Tony DeLucia as our new Director of Buildings and Grounds. We're very excited about that. And tonight, I have two recommendations for the board's consideration for a maintenance supervisor and for custodial manager. DeLuca, I'm sorry. Thank you. So first, our maintenance supervisor, our recommendation is Keith Grotto. Keith started in the district and, as a substitute maintenance employee in 1997. He went to full-time and has been with us since 1998. His tenure included the responsibilities of carpenter, locksmith, general buildings and grounds maintenance in the district. And for the past nine years, Keith has served as the shop steward until taking on the acting role of foreman in March of, of 2019. A father of nine children, he is an extraordinary employee father, and we are happy and excited, no. We are happy and excited to, to make this recommendation. So with the board's agreement, I'd like to move part of, I think it's 13 dot 10, the appointment of our maintenance supervisor. Is that all right?
Yeah.
So it's my pleasure to recommend Keith Grotto, Maintenance Supervisor of the District effective August 26, 2019, to replace Anthony DeLuca and at a salary of $79,000 prorated.
Okay, may I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved?
Thank you, thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got it. Okay. Any questions or comments? I dare you. Yay, moving right along, roll call.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Eel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. It is also my pleasure to announce my recommendation for custodial manager to the Board of Education. His name is Matthew Spill, Matthew, excuse me, Matthew Spill. And Matthew has been, has actually, is coming from out of district, is currently an administrative lead for Atlantic Ambulance Corporation. He has worked in the healthcare field and is excited to be joining our team. So with, with your permission, I ask for the board's consideration of my recommendation for custodial manager of Matthew Spill effective September 9th, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. This is a new position based upon our elimination of, of earmarks privatization at a salary of $60,000 prorated. Yes, and he is here as well.
So moved?
Let's, let's make sure he's appointed and then let me...
May I have a motion in seconds? Yes, yes, okay. Any comments, questions, seeing none? Roll call.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Eel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes, congratulations.
You, you have both passed the first test of being able to sit through a meeting like this, so congratulations and welcome aboard. Okay, are we moving along, or do you have the superintendent?
No, now we move along to the policies and regulations requiring annual review. These are listed on communications that go out to the members of the community. We have, for years now, put this on the board agenda for public review consideration as well as the board's review. We're not making any recommendations of any changes, these are policies and regulations that require annual review.
Do we need a motion?
No.
Excellent, so therefore, we're now up to committee reports. So are you...
Starting with me?
Ready for education?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be quick. We reviewed a few policies, one of which was the opioid, the Narcan policy. We recommend some curriculum, specifically those curricula that are on the agenda tonight for world languages. And we also discussed implementation of the random drug testing policy this year with all of the changes that we've had with respect to no, no nursing supervisor, who was our laboratory supervisor as well. And I believe that is pretty much, oh, and we also discussed the referendum, which we're not discussing tonight, so that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Greg for operations?
Yep, I'll, I'll try to be brief as well. We met on August 13th, we had discussion with our athletic director, Michael Davis, about booster clubs. There is a policy that you can enact, I think I mentioned this at a previous meeting, there's a policy you can enact about booster clubs requiring them to have certain things, maybe insurance, being a 501(c)(3), maybe being incorporated, maybe following other guidelines. It looks like we're not going to, we're not going to proceed with any policy at this time because so few booster clubs in our district met any of the criteria. I think there are only maybe six out of the 25 or so booster clubs that met any significant, that met any of the criteria at all. But we still value the booster clubs, and I still think that there may be value in some sort of policy because the actual policy that we looked at, the purpose of the policy is to have these criteria. But the purpose is so that you can designate which booster club is the official booster club for that sport. You can envision a scenario where two parent groups or something, each one to be the official booster club. And booster clubs enjoy a special relationship with our district and the coaches. So maybe there might be some way to develop a policy where once a year, we designate which booster clubs are which, are with, which sport and have something. So we, we're going to look at that in the future. We also, this will be the really quick part, we talked about the referendum with Mike Wozniak, everything you saw like today, basically. A little bit with the financial people also, so we did that. Let's see, I'm going to go right down. We had Lisa Bennett, who was here tonight, talking about transportation, she talked about, oh, she's still here. She's, she talked about the reduction in cursey busing, how, what was happening with that and gave us a full report on that, some of which you heard tonight. And we did talk about contingencies such as what, what would happen in inclement weather, things like that, that, for students that are not receiving busing. We accepted, we're going to accept a donation from Triangle Elementary HSA for some air conditioning units. We did make a application for emergency aid, which Dr. Schiff was working on, or who's working on that? Mr. Mahmood was working on that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, there you go, thank you, Mr. Mahmood, and Ashley. And Marla Ashley, okay.
It was all Ashley.
It was all Ashley, actually, and...
Our wonderful Ashley.
We don't expect to receive any emergency aid, by the way. We don't, we don't, really don't expect to, but it's, it's our duty to, to ask for it because it was made of, it was made available. We don't, we really don't expect to, but it's our duty to ask for it because it was made, it was made available. You apply for it, and we did it. And that's it.
Very good, thank you. Anne, communications?
Yes.
Dr. Anne?
We spent the good part of our meeting talking about how to effectively communicate the referendum. And so when we are looking at that, we know that we need to be more effective in our education of the community for what debt service is and the debt service aid and the Educational Facilities and Construction and Financing Act. So we will be educating as we go along. We just, we thought of three things that we could do to perhaps include more of the community in an interactive situation by having some multiple community forums that would include a brief presentation by members of the board as well as the superintendent, the district architect, and the financial advisors. And then including perhaps, and this is all just waiting to happen, but not tomorrow or not next week. We want to consider a Facebook Live page or a Facebook Live event for one hour during one of our board meetings. And also, we wanted to try and have a roundtable evening with board members at each table communicating to the community, those interested people who come to hear us. Also, we're working on gathering key communicators because many times as board members, we ethically are held by a code which we are not allowed to answer things unless we have, I guess, permission. So, in that light, we're looking for key communicators who can help us get out the right message and be transparent and be crystal clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And Chris for HR and negotiations?
Yes, so for the HR Committee, we had an extensive discussion of the referendum that we're not going to discuss anymore tonight. We also discussed some staffing. The most important parts of that were the two positions we just approved a few minutes ago. We also discussed the outstanding positions with, I believe at the time, there was one teaching position left, Phil, but interviews were expected that week. I'm getting, yeah, but otherwise, we're in good shape. We are, we do have a number of coaching vacancies right now, but only two of those are for the fall, and the athletic director has qualified candidates for that, so we're okay with that staffing.
And negotiations?
Yes, so I did want to report out to the board and the public on negotiations. The Hillsborough Board of Education and the Hillsborough Education Association were unable to reach a contract settlement after five months of direct negotiations and two sessions with a state-appointed mediator that combined to more than 14 hours of continued negotiations. The second mediation session was scheduled for September 12th, but at the association's request and with the cooperation of the mediator and the board's negotiations committee, the session was scheduled for August 14th. While some progress was made, the parties were unable to reach settlement on a number of critical issues, including salary, the workday for part-time employees, tuition reimbursement criteria, and the length and content of professional learning communities. On August 14th, the board made several proposals and counter-proposals, all of which included competitive salary increases for all of its employees. While the board was optimistic that a contract settlement could be reached at the second mediation session, particularly since the association was so insistent on meeting before September 12th, it was extremely disappointing that once mediation, the association did not change its prior bargaining position and forced the mediation session to end because it declined to make any counterproposal to the board for settlement. As to where we proceed from here, that decision is now in the mediator's hands and largely depends on whether or not he feels that another session will be productive. If he does not, then the contract dispute will be sent to fact-finding, which is a formal but not binding process that requires that a state-appointed fact-finder conduct a hearing, consider the party's last best offers, and make recommendations for the terms of a settlement. This process will likely not conclude until well into the school year. For these reasons, the board hopes that the association will return to the mediation process with a commitment to settlement, which requires compromise and a mutual exchange of proposals. If the association expresses their willingness to do so, then there will be, may be another mediation session on September 12th. Otherwise, it appears that the dispute will likely be sent to a fact-finder. Outside of negotiations, the board and the association are participating in Rutgers Labor Management Cooperation Initiative and were among the first districts in the state to do so. The board, with considerable effort, responded last year to the association's concerns about Aetna's health plan and customer service to its members and switched back to Horizon in the middle of the year. The board and association also initiated a Borough Pride project to gather government and community groups in collective efforts on behalf of Hillsborough. The board values the employees' contributions to the district's outstanding educational and extracurricular programs. However, this must be balanced with all of the district's educational priorities and the impact of these costs on the taxpayers of Hillsborough in light of the serious financial challenges the district is facing this year and beyond. As this process moves forward, the board continues its commitment to working cooperatively with the association and remains optimistic that a voluntary settlement can be reached without resorting to a protracted and costly fact-finding process. The association's contract expired on June 30th, 2019. However, the employees continue to work under the expired agreement and continue to receive their salaries, medical insurance, sick days, and all of the other benefits of the expired contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any further comments on committee reports?
Can I just say one brief thing for municipal lines? This, this Wednesday at RVCC, there will be an overdose and suicide awareness vigil, and it will take place at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. That's been well-publicized, so hopefully people will attend.
Someone sent me an email about that.
Yeah.
The electric sign in front of, the electric sign in front of Montgomery High School also reminds people of that event. So for those of you who drive down 601 every morning like I do, you see that sign.
Okay. All righty, with that, we can move to the education agenda?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel-related expenses, the FY 2020 ESEA grant allocation, the statement of assurance for district professional development plan, as well as the statement of assurance for the district mentoring plan, approve the staff being paid through Title I funds, approve revised curriculum as reported out, also approve staff members being paid by IDEA funds as listed, approve the affiliation agreement between Kane University and Hillsborough Township Public Schools, and approve curriculum writing and common assessment development.
Okay. I'll take a motion in a second for items 12.1 through 12.9, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Lorraine, second.
Second.
Chris? Okay, questions, comments? Roll call.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
I'm going to say yes, although I was not in attendance, but I did read the agenda before I arrived.
Mr. Gillette?
So I say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Eel?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following recommendations that I'm making under the area of human resources to approve the attached resolutions, approve the retirements and resignations as listed, including Sue Grabett, secretary in our business office, who has been with us since September of 1994, Robin Magaziner, who's a sixth-grade teacher literacy at Autton Road, who has been with us since February of 2006, and Patricia Talbert, who's a special education teacher at Wood Fern, who's been with us since September of 1997. And we thank them for their dedicated service to our district. Also approve the resignations as listed, approve the revised resignation, approve revised leaves of absences and leaves of absences for last year as well as this year coming up. Approve contract changes as listed and transfers and changes in assignments. Approve reappointment of staff members and affirm the appointments of teachers, long-term substitutes, school psychologists, speech and language specialists, instructional assistants. We've already done the maintenance supervisor and custodial manager, but also to approve the transportation aides, parking lot attendant, and coaches and substitutes as listed. Also approve the renewal of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and approve the renewal of the Business Administrator Board Secretary. Also motion to approve the revise, to revise the administrator's salary change and approve extra-period coverage. Approve the administrative internship and summer work, ESY program staff and seventh-period coverage. Also approve the extended media center hours for the high school and approve the two, the turnkey trainers as attached.
Okay, I'll take a motion for items 13.1 through 13.20, please.
So moved.
Thanks, Chris. Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Lorraine? Any questions or comments?
Yes, can we please separate out 13.11 and 13.12 to vote on those separately individually and separately?
I'm sorry?
Can we please vote on those separately from the main, so like to vote on 13.11 by itself and then 13.12 by itself and then the remainder can be one group?
Okay. Any other separates? Okay, so I'll take a motion then from 13.1 through 13.10 and 13.13 through 13.20.
I think you already have a motion, but I'll move it again.
Okay.
You have a motion on the table.
Go. Any other comments? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Eel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Okay.
Motion passes.
13.11, motion in second, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions, comments?
So as we talked about in the July 22nd meeting where I voted no on the unaffiliated administrators, I, you know, this, this particular employment agreement, it's not, as I said before, it's not the person, and also for 13.12, it's not the person, it's, it's the concept that we are, are, we're providing a salary increase when we have so many other issues going on that we have not settled the contract. We have so many unknowns that it just seems wrong, or, no, not wrong, it seems irresponsible for us to vote for a salary increase. I really liked Dr. Harris's suggestion at the, at the last, when we approved the budget, that we ought to have a salary freeze just so we can figure out where we are and where we're heading and kind of get ourselves back on our feet. So I just, I feel like this is not responsible for the board to approve these salary increases.
Any other comments?
I think that, I understand the sentiment, but I guess, we just had, I don't know how many people say that it's very important that we settle the contract, which means we're going to give our teachers a raise, and yet you want to freeze a very small number of people for an amount of money that is not going to impact our budget on, I guess, on some principal position or something. I just, I guess I don't understand, if we're, if we're going to advocate that we need to settle with the teachers as soon as possible and we're going to spend that money, why would we impose a pay freeze on a very small number of people who have, who are earning that raise just like everybody else is? I don't understand the idea that somehow holding back raises for one or two people is going to change our situation at all.
Okay. Yes, Lorraine?
Yeah, I agree with you, Chris. I also want to say that this has been a very tumultuous year for this district. And we've had people leave at will, we've had people leave not at will, and we've had, you know, a few people trying to be glue and really step up and manage when, when everybody was sort of falling apart. And, you know, it's not just because she's sitting next to me, but I do want to point out that, that Lisa has done an incredibly admirable job, that if she was in the private sector, she would be rewarded in other ways that we can't reward her. This is a very small token of appreciation. And again, Chris is right, we're going to give raises to everybody. If everybody was taking a salary freeze, which is what Dr. Harris advocated and I would have been fully supportive of, then this, I wouldn't be making this statement. But I do want to say that, you know, we've had our, our Director of Human Resources leave and who, who did that job in his absence. We've, our Business Administrator has not been well, and I'm so happy to see you back, Iman. You know, and, and she's been managing, you know, junior staff and trying to bring them along and train people in these new positions. So I can't say enough in support of Dr. Intunis, so I will stop there. Thank you.
Okay, I'll continue. And honestly, I could talk all night, but I won't. I just have to say, in addition to, you know, the absence of a Personnel Director and Iman's absence, Lisa's also sustained a 23% cut in her budget, all of which is going to fall back on her. She's lost two major supervisors and a secretary and other cuts in her departments. The Technology Department has been trashed. And honestly, I'm not supposed to make evaluative comments, but here goes. Lisa's one of the best people I've ever known in profession as well as personally, and I think this raise is long overdue and it needs to happen, so I'll stop there. Yes?
Just one other point I'd like to add, and I'm far enough away from Lisa, she can't hit me anyway. But due to legal reasons that are outside of our control or Lisa's or anybody else's, she has had to take on a role entirely outside of her job description and the area for which she is responsible in participating in negotiations. And to put that on top of somebody whose position is already getting worsened, you know, we talk about people having to do more when we have cutbacks, but when we talk about that, we're talking about people doing that within their own area of expertise and the area that they're responsible for. And I understand that. But when a situation conspires to force somebody to take on even more that is outside of their area of responsibility entirely, and that gets added on to everything else, I really think that needs to be recognized.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
I agree with what everybody's saying. Dr. Intunis has really done additional work. However, I do believe that applies to a lot of people in our district, especially after the failed referendum and the loss of a lot of personnel. And some programs has created more work for lots of other people. So in light of the percent increase that all the other people are getting at 2.55%, I think a higher percent than that is not appropriate this time.
Okay. Any other comments?
I wanted to respond to Mr. Pulsifer's comments. You're right in the sense that, yes, I understand that, that all, all of our staff are doing an excellent job. And, and if the budget or if our finances were in better order, this would be a very easy yes. However, I feel like the order in which we're doing this is not, we're doing it in the wrong order. I feel that we need to settle the contract first rather than, rather than give the 3.5% for this particular. I just, I just think that's not responsible for us. I agree that it's a very small amount of money in the, in the grand scheme of things, but it just sets the wrong tone, I think, that, that's just, that's just my opinion. I'm trying to articulate why I feel this way because I was also the minority in voting no on the unaffiliated contracts. I'm not against, I'm not against salary increase. I just feel like this district doesn't have the money. And so, you know, we calculated, we, I don't know if the community realizes how large a percentage of our budget is salary. I mean, and we are, for, and so, and I was just doing the numbers for the HEA salaries. The HEA salaries is about 52% of the budget. And the insurance is about 16% of the budget. And so if you look at the county average in Somerset County of what contracts have settled at, at, given our two percent cap, and that's two percent on the tax levy, not two percent on our budget, so when I did the math originally, so I'm actually off a little bit, so it's actually worse, um, if you look at just the H E A salaries in terms of, if we went to the county average, we take up one point six percent of that two percent cap, and then if we look at the insurance, it's estimated to increase by twelve percent, that's like one point nine percent. So just on salary and benefits alone, we're at three point five percent, so we're like over the two percent, like we can't even, so basically that means the rest of our budget has to shrink every year, so that's why I keep saying, next year in, in April, we are going to be cutting positions again unless something changes. So yes, these salaries are small, these actual dollar values are like in the four digits, it's, it's nothing, but we're like, we're doing things backwards, I feel. We, we have to fix the problem as to, what Dr. Schiff said earlier, the cap, we have a cap. So, I just, I don't know, I don't think I've articulated well, but that's what I feel.
I understand where you're coming from, but I disagree. I have only known Dr. Antunes for a short period of time, 'cause I only came on the board in January, but in working with her on the Education Committee, and to see the things that she has done since I have been here, uh, she's taken on some major responsibilities, positions have been lost, and she's absorbed and taken on those responsibilities, otherwise those could have been some key salaries that would have been added on to this budget. So, in my opinion, I believe that she should receive that increase.
The, the, but the problem is, you, as you said, you have observed, you, she, you're literally close to her, you have seen her work, and it's fantastic, but there are so many other personnel, so many other people, so many other staff in our district, that you don't see that, I argue, work, have, have their, have had their workload increased tremendously. So...
I'm not, I'm not even going to address that.
My, my worry is, again, that, that the teachers have said that the fear of, of people leaving the district to find something better, and that's my fear with Dr. Antunes. I don't think this district can afford losing her, and I think that if she weren't with us, that impact would be much greater than the impact of the raise.
Okay. Could we, could we go?
Lisa, if you'd like, we have paused, so you can leave, so you're not embarrassed by all this. I, I, I understand your point, uh, Ms. Stats, I, I think to me, and that, the reason I raised the, the point about negotiations, 'cause I agree with you, that all of our staff are stepping up and, and doing extra, but to me, taking on negotiations was similar to, um, a teacher taking on a fifth or sixth period of extra, whatever the, the numbers are, they get extra compensation when they take on something above and beyond that job description. So, different from, let's say, having a, a twenty-four kids instead of twenty-two, or whatever, we, we are asking everybody to do that kind of step up. But to me, taking on negotiations, some of those aspects are much more akin to a teacher actually taking on assigned extra coverage, for which they get paid extra. And to me, that's why I specifically brought up negotiations, because that is something that is not, I think, up, anytime at this point, it's been the purview of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And so that is a totally extra responsibility, as opposed to doing more of what you've already been doing. So I understand the point, but I think there is a distinction there, as to compared to the losing staff, having the budget cuts, I mean, I think that's part of do more with less. But to me, the taking on an entirely different role, and something that has never been part of that position, warrants recognition.
Okay.
But there are a lot of things that, uh, other, that staff members do, besides maybe taking on an extra class, for which they are compensated, you're right, that there are times where, uh, staff will, because of another staff member going through hard times, or, um, even a supervisor, uh, people step up and, uh, do more work, mostly for the sake of the students, but also, as far, also, you know, a kind of a, a collegial kind of thing, you know, but for the sake of the students, a lot of times they do above and beyond, and without compensation.
If I could make it an analogy, do we have English teachers teaching calculus? Because that's what we're asking for here, was we're asking somebody to do something entirely outside of their area. I understand what you're saying, but those people are doing it within the areas of which they have the expertise and the experience. We have forced, and I'll use that, that's my term, but I think that the conflict scenarios that we're in right now have forced Lisa to take that role, which is not a role that she should have had to take on. And so to me at least, that's, that's a meaningful difference.
Can I ask a question, though? In sixth period coverage, or whatever that terminology is, is that money pensionable? Like, does that get added on to their base salary?
Yes.
Oh, it is? Really?
Yeah.
So when they do the, the coverage for just...
Yes.
No, sorry, sorry, so, no, sorry, I take that back, that's not what I mean.
What I mean is, does that change their base salary? So, for example...
No, but they get the money for the, well, it, it depends on the duration, like if they pick up a sixth period for the year, then their salary for the year is up.
Right, but their salary for next year will still go back to their, whatever step level that we're at? So that's where the analogy breaks down, because this, in this particular case, this is now the new base salary, when negotiations is just for one year.
She's not getting twenty percent more, or whatever the, the calculated sixth period calculation is, either.
I think we've all...
I'm just... I think, I think everyone's had more than two chances to speak on this.
I think we need to move on.
I, I've had zero chances, 'cause I haven't weighed in, you're not gonna like what I, how I weigh in, Lisa, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm just gonna do my part by not saying anything, and can we go to a vote, maybe?
I hear ya. Uh, roll call?
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
No.
Ms. Dr. Harris?
Upstain.
Uh, Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
No.
Mr. Eo?
No.
And Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Five to three. Five to three, with an abstention.
Good, I'm glad it passed, but...
I'll take a motion, uh, in a second, for item thirteen point twelve.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Good, roll call.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Eo?
No.
And Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We're off operations.
Moving on in the agenda, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, including to approve monthly bills, the transportation contracts, um, the approve the apparent, uh, transportation contracts, and approve transportation renewals, and policy for second reading, uh, the activity fee, uh, participation program, and to accept the donation from the Triangle Home and School Association for twenty thousand dollars to be used to, for the purchase of air conditioning units, and we bank them for their, their generous donation, uh, and to approve the, uh, addendum to a settlement agreement.
Okay, I'll take a motion for items fourteen point one through fourteen point seven, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Um, are there any questions or comments on the operations agenda? I see a hand raised. Lorraine?
Um, we just heard Mr. Wasn't say that there was sort of a right way to do air conditioning and a wrong way to do air conditioning. What way is this twenty thousand dollars going to be used?
It, he, these are going to be, uh, Dr. Sussan, uh, window units, however, he did not have any objection to that. I know other, uh, architects were concerned about it, um, Mr. Wasn't was not concerned about, he was at the Operations Committee meeting when we, when discussed it, and he didn't have an issue with it. There are some architects that are not thrilled with it, but we have fully functional window units that, uh, work well. The only thing we needed to do was just check on electricity and the circuits, and that's something that we're researching, but, uh, we were not concerned about, um, anything as far as how to put, installing these particular units.
Okay. Um, just a note, I asked the same question of the board when I was Triangle School President, and had forty thousand dollars to donate, and got told no, but I'm happy that we have some sort of evolution going on here that will, um, make these kids and, and teachers more comfortable, specifically in the third and fourth grade wing, I'm hoping that's where they're going. Thank you.
Okay, good.
I would like, hello, I would like to separate out fourteen point five.
Fourteen point five. Okay.
And I also have one comment, or actually, just, I just noticed a cler, um, cler, I think it's just clerical, in fourteen point three, under the, um, parent transportation contracts, the, um, the second line, um, it says fourteen thousand four hundred dollars, and then there's like another twenty-four hundred, like, and then it says like eighty dollars per day for thirty days, I think it's eighty dollars per day for a hundred and eighty days, maybe, and then that extra twenty-four hundred is just like a typo?
The twenty-four hundred is a monthly cost, and then it's six months, I believe that's the math.
Right, but the other, others don't follow that same format, so that's, so there's like E S Y, I think, I mean, if you look at the other two, two, um, students, it follows, the twenty-four hundred was for the summer, and then the fourteen thousand four hundred was for a hundred and eighty days, but the typo, I think, is that, um, it says thirty days, and it should be one eighty days? I think it's just a...
Twenty-four hundred.
Right, right.
So in other words, it should look like the, the second line, the Seguna Morela's second line, for Allegra Schools?
Yes, correct.
And it looks, yeah, we can make the correction, it looks like it just needs to be a hundred...
Let me tell you, I'm sorry.
The, the math is correct.
Yes.
I think it may not be a typo, but let, can you take a look, Lisa?
It's, it's expressed differently, but the math works correctly.
Right.
Well, it's the, it's the D L C in Warren, and if, is, was it just for thirty days? If it was just for thirty days...
I think it's...
It works out, if it, if it was for a four hundred...
No, if you, the, the twenty-four hundred is what thirty days amounts to, so if you then multiply it by six to get to, you multiply the twenty-four hundred by six to get to the full six months, it's fourteen thousand four hundred.
Correct.
The math works, it's a little kludgy the way it's expressed there, but the math is accurate.
No, but it says actually...
It should read the way that the second line and the, and the second...
I understand, but the math is correct and the number is correct. You're talking, it's...
The twenty-four hundred shouldn't be there, is what I'm saying, Chris, it should say eighty dollars a day for a hundred and eighty days.
Or you could say twenty-four hundred per month, times six months, either one of those is correct, but my point is the fourteen thousand four hundred is still the correct number.
It should be eighty dollars a day, a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, that, that makes more sense. It's just a little, it's just a little messed up, there's like a parenthesis out there, like that has no partner, whatever they call that, in, you know, fourth grade.
What happened is that, I can tell you what happened, I would bet, 'cause I do it all the time, they copied and pasted the first line to the second line, put in the fourteen thousand four hundred, and didn't take out the twenty-four hundred.
Right.
Okay. Okay. So everything except fourteen point five?
Yep.
Okay, everything except fourteen point five?
Yep.
Okay, I'll do it then.
Okay.
Can we hold on for a second, please?
Sure.
Well, if we're gonna talk about the math being correct, I just multiplied out eighty times a hundred and eighty, and I got fourteen thousand four hundred, so the last one is wrong. That's why I was saying that that number was mathematically correct, the last number is mathematically wrong, the first one is correct.
Sixteen thousand...
Sixteen thousand two hundred. Is incorrect.
Yes.
That should be also fourteen thousand four hundred.
Are you talking about for Kristin Stein's Allegra School?
Yeah, we're not, yeah, let's not leak the names of the people.
Yes, leave the names out.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the Allegra, so that, I think, again, is a typo, the first line says ninety dollars per day, the second line says eighty dollars per day, so it's probably, again, a typo.
Ninety dollars.
Ninety times a one eighty, do that math, Chris.
They're both ninety dollars.
Yes.
Oh, they're, okay, well, there, then there's a typo there.
Why is that one different?
They're going a different...
Add another eighteen hundred, and you got sixteen two, yeah.
I think the memo said something about distances.
If it's ninety, then sixteen two is correct.
It's, it's fourteen four.
Is it ninety days?
Not sixteen two.
No, it's ninety dollars, instead of eighty dollars.
Sixteen two is ninety dollars a day.
Yep.
Yep, sixteen, sixteen is ninety.
It's gonna be ninety dollars.
Okay, so the last one is ninety days, for a hundred, ninety a day for a hundred and eighty days? The others are still eighty dollars a day?
Yes.
For fourteen four?
Which is fourteen.
Okay, and this needs to get crossed out.
Yes.
Okay, are we all square?
Yep.
Everything except fourteen point five, right?
Right. Roll call.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sussan?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Eo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Fourteen point five. Motion's second.
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
I just want to clarify for the public, too, that this policy actually was approved on April twenty-ninth.
Correct.
So this is actually just a, a modification on some categories.
Yes, in relation to the marching band period.
So, so as I had voted no in April, I'm going to vote no again.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I'm gonna vote no, even though it won't remove the policy, 'cause I think circumstances have changed in just the past week, and I think, we don't, I don't think we need to collect these fees anymore. Um, so I, I think we could absorb this cost.
Circumstance change.
Would you elaborate on that?
Well, I think so, I think, I think so, I think we're getting close to the end of our audit, I think we're gonna have a good result at the end of our audit. My principal position on this has been consistent, uh, it was only these, you know, I, extraordinary times, uh, extraordinary fiscal, financial crisis that brought us to imposing the, uh, the activity fee. Um, I don't, I don't think that the athletic activities and after-school clubs are in any way, should be any way separate from the, you know, nine to three school day. I've been consistent in that position for about twelve and a half years, um, I think it's all, all the same, there should be no barriers at all, including anything. Um, so, when, when we had this financial crisis, and we had to, um, account for maybe two hundred thousand dollars in activity fees, um, to prevent, um, three additional positions from being lost in the budget, which is what this revenue stream does, I don't think that circumstance, uh, is going to be in play anymore. Now, look, my no vote's not gonna change anything, but, so I'm just putting it out there, to think about, we can, next budget time, I'll, you know, if I'm still here on the board, I'll remind you that I said today that, and maybe we can reverse this, or anytime, um, that we, that we have a different financial situation, and so...
Well, Lisa?
I, um, I wanna say, I totally agree with, with Greg on this. Um, again, I, I'm gonna vote yes, but just, I, I know that it's not gonna change if I voted no, but, again, this is something that I'm very interested in reversing.
When, when is this audit, when is this audit going to?
Be finalized. It, it'll be finalized, it's probably the end of September, or beginning of October?
Beginning of October.
If that's the case, do we have to do so? I mean, I, I'm willing to consider that, based on the outcome of the audit, which we don't have, and also, given the outcome of the audit, an opportunity to discuss a variety of things we might do, if there actually is extra money from the audit, but I'm not willing to commit right now that if there is extra money, this is the one thing I want to do. So I would prefer, if we believe that the findings of the audit will be available relatively the findings of the audit will be available relatively soon, I guess, a month? I mean, is there any reason not to hold off on the second reading until we have those numbers and can have a discussion about if there is extra money, what do we want to do? Because I'm not prepared to vote that this is the thing I would do with that money that I don't even know if we have.
I sort of confused the issue. The policy today is only for a minor change in the policy. We've already enacted the policy. It's already in place. So voting yes or no today, either way you vote, we still have the policy. This is to make a change in, to the marching band area, how that's calculated or something.
I understand. I'm just suggesting...
I just brought it up because it was on the agenda tonight, and it seemed apropos, but, you know, I didn't mean to confuse it.
Well, no, you didn't confuse me. I'm not suggesting that you said we should do this just because of the band. My point is, if we do believe that this is something we really didn't want to do, and there is money available, if we find that there is, once we have the audit numbers, there's plenty of, there's been plenty of statements at the board, myself included, that we didn't want to do this but felt squeezed, and maybe we're not going to be as squeezed. So I'm suggesting the entire policy, if in fact the audit findings actually do show that there is an avenue of making a change here, I'm suggesting we just table the whole thing. I mean, I understand that this change is just this one change, but I'm suggesting that we revisit the whole thing based on the outcome of the audit.
I have a question. Are you saying that even if we all voted no, this already has, the ship has sailed?
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to make a motion tonight to say that at a future meeting, you're going to consider removing the policy or something. It's a whole thing, right?
Well, just because of policy for review.
Do you think we should table it, then?
Well, the only thing, the only thing that this will do will be to include the marching band as part of the special activity assessment. And if...
Actually, it's the winter guard not to be charged.
It's not really marching band, it's winter guard.
So...
Not to charge additionally for winter guard.
So if the audit comes back, and the auditors tell you that additional monies can be appropriated to relieve parents of this obligation, then you can rescind or revise the policy. On the other hand, if the audit, if the audit returns, is returned to you, and you're not able to do that, then you would not be able to adopt this policy and impose this activity fee for this activity retroactively. So the idea is that if the activity fee is going to be imposed, it should be imposed before the activity begins, because it's not fair to parents and guardians to impose that activity fee after they've already made a decision to participate at no cost. So I would simply say that the better practice would be to wait until the audit is completed. If you have the monies available, and you're able to relieve parents and guardians of this responsibility, to then go back and to rescind that policy.
And your suggestion then would be to proceed with this one, so we're at an equitable position for our current policy?
Yes.
And then revisit the whole thing at a later time?
That is my recommendation.
So we should probably, so maybe I'll change my mind. Maybe we should vote yes to bring the marching band, or the, I'm sorry, the winter guard into proper line with the other activities, however, whatever the change exactly was.
Let's be clear. The winter guard is an additional activity. They're in the marching band. They're the guard in the marching band. This would not charge them an additional fee for winter, participating in winter guard. So we absolutely should do this, or else those parents may have to be charged twice at a hundred dollars a clip, okay?
Winter guard is part of the...
So this should be an easy yes for people.
So, yeah, so I'm okay with that, but I just, I think I did what I wanted to do. I wanted to talk about it.
You did.
You wanted to set out what it was, right?
I wanted to talk about it, to say that, to put out my, to put out my idea that I think maybe we can do just what Steve said. At a future date, I'd like to, I'm not happy. I'm not comfortable with the activity fees. But, yeah, I'll vote yes today to put, to do the same thing with winter guard that we did with the other multi-sports.
We need to clean up the policy as it stands, anyway.
One at a time.
Well, I do think we need to clean up the policy as it stands, so that there's equity across the board, and then revisit, if and when we find the money, revisit the whole policy. But for this, this is more about equity within the breakouts, so we should do it.
Okay.
All right, I'm good now.
Are we ready for a roll call?
I'm not sure.
Roll call.
Ms. Eldred Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
No.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, are we good? Okay, last comments from the board and the public. Public? Any further comments? Seeing none? Oh, one, okay.
Hi, Kelly Valano, eighty-seven Meadowbrook. Just a quick question. Dr. Sasan, you said that as part of the education committee, there would be a change in the random drug testing because there's not a nursing supervisor anymore. Can you please expand on that?
There will not be a change. It was, we were discussing how it would be implemented, given that there is no nursing supervisor, but there is no change.
Okay, thank you.
Henry Goodhue Hillsborough Education Association, Laurel Drive. Just a couple of questions, clarification if you will. Mr. Mahmood has left, so I guess this falls to Ms. Sandriano. In relation to the budget, our current budget met the two percent cap, correct?
Our current budget met the two percent cap with the allowable waivers we were able to utilize.
Yes, thank you.
Including enrollment and healthcare.
Did that budget include the tax-mandated predictions for salary increases for staff?
The tax ma...
That you have to budget a prediction?
The budget included salary predictions.
Exactly, your salary predictions for all staff within the district. Did it include those?
Yes.
And you were still within the two percent with the applicable waivers, correct?
Our finalized budget, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fogarty, you also mentioned, as Dr. Schiff had pointed out, that one-third of the districts in New Jersey are at impasse, correct?
I think Dr. Schiff said approximately one-third of the districts are at impasse, and I said that that is probably correct.
Thank you. Do you happen to know how many of them rank within the top two hundred school districts in the nation?
I do not know.
Do you know how many are ranked number one in Somerset County?
Of the districts that are at impasse?
Yes.
I do not know.
I can tell you that. It's us, actually. It's Hillsborough. We are currently at impasse, and our staff was ranked number one within Somerset County. So while we're looking at what is good for the state, or what the actual statistics are for the state, I think it's important that we apply them in relation to what's going on with our district and who we are within our district.
I think unfortunately, the issue of impasse is not specific to the performance of school districts. Now, our firm represents about sixty school districts statewide, and some of the highest-performing school districts reach impasse over any number of issues. So performance data in a school district is not necessarily relevant to whether or not a district goes to impasse.
Fair enough, but would you be able to tell me how many of those sixty districts you represent are ranked number one within their county for staff, or in the top two hundred nationally?
I would say of the sixty school districts that we represent, I can't tell you which are ranked number one, but I can certainly tell you that of the school districts, that there are many school districts that we represent similar to your own. Rabapoindin Hills Regional, Pescac Valley Regional, Mountain Lakes, Princeton, Montgomery. So certainly, those are all very high-performing school districts, and for one reason or another, parties reach an impasse, and depending upon what the issues are in a specific school district.
So is it fair to say that a majority of the high-ranking districts that you represent have reached impasse at some point?
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that I think you're asking me a question with regard to Hillsborough's ranking, and whether or not there is some relationship between that ranking and impasse. And I think what you're suggesting is that we shouldn't be at impasse because of your ranking academically. And what I'm saying is, based on my experience over the years, that the performance data of a school district is not necessarily relevant to whether we're at an impasse. I mean, the impasse is generally driven by the issues that are unfortunately the most difficult for us to resolve, and that is usually salary and benefits. And I think that that has been the case in Hillsborough. It's been the case in all of those other school districts as well.
Sure, no disagreement about that. I think it's important to note, though, that if you're drawing a connection between a third of the districts, that you mark the distinguishing factors of ours, as well as recognize what Ms. Sandriano just mentioned, which was that the money has already, the predictions have been made, and the budget has been struck within the two percent. I also think it's concerning that it's now common practice for a law firm, any law firm, to have contracts at impasse, but I understand that that is becoming more and more commonplace within New Jersey, as well as the nation, and that's unfortunate. I do also want to address...
You know what happens when the lawyers get involved, Henry.
I do also want to address the statement read by Mr. Pulsofer, and obviously, we'll need some time to review the comments that were made at that point. I do think it is somewhat disingenuous to represent that the association requested that meeting. If you're referring to what was said at board meetings, you are welcome to go back and review those tapes. What we said is what we recommended, and encouraged, and asked the board to meet without the mediator sooner than that time, at which point I received a rather terse response from President Haas in relation to why wouldn't we meet in August. I said that our team was not available. We did not have quorum of our team to meet in August, and that was why we could not, and that I felt the board should explain their refusal to meet in July before I had to answer about August. To represent that we requested that meeting is quite disingenuous to me. In fact, when, Mr. Fogarty, you called our UNISERV rep and requested the meeting, and noted that to him. So...
I did, I did. I absolutely called Mr. Render, and I requested the meeting, because President Haas told me that you were very interested in meeting before school began in September. And as a result of that, we pulled up all the stops in order to meet with you before the first day of school. We considered that to be an express priority of yours. As to why the board didn't meet with, without professionals, you will recall that you declared the impasse in the negotiations. We felt that the most productive way was to continue the impasse proceedings with the assistance of a mediator. We think, we still believe that that is the most productive way for us to continue to meet, but we certainly understood that you wanted to meet before September. We called the mediator, asked them whether or not he had a cancellation. As you know, that all happened very quickly. We came back. It was our hope to be able to settle the contract, so that school could begin with the employees having a contract.
Absolutely. I think that was everyone's intent. That was certainly the intent we went into it with as well, and I appreciate your candor in answering that question and admitting that it was you, in fact, who called that, and I hope that your comment, or that your statement, rather, is amended to reflect that, as it currently states, that we were the ones who requested it, when in fact, we did not. So, thank you.
Well, I think, I'm not sure that we agree with, I'm not sure that we agree on that issue, but I'm not even sure that it's worth debating that issue. The ball is now in your court with regard to the September twelfth meeting. We hope we have the opportunity to meet with you. If we took the wrong cue from you about wanting to meet before school opened in September, then we'll accept responsibility for that, but that was our understanding. And that was the reason that we pulled up all the stops to meet with you, when the mediator said that he had a cancellation.
And we also pulled up the stops on our side as well, to ensure that we had quorum for that meeting. The aspects of the rest of the statement, I'll save for discussion at another time, but thank you for acknowledging that you were, in fact, the one who did request that meeting.
You are very welcome for having the opportunity to engage me in that discussion, but our position remains the same. We'll have to disagree about how, what motivated that meeting, but as I said, I don't think it's particularly productive to have, to engage in that debate. I'm glad that we had the meeting, and so I look forward to meeting with you again, and I hope that you express to the mediator a desire to meet on September twelfth.
Sure, and I appreciate that sentiment. I think it's important, though, that as the board sits here and has discussions about future referendums and the future of our district, that the one theme we kept hearing over and over again was about transparency and communication, and perhaps honesty being the second one after that. So if you're going to put out a statement that conveys one thing, I think it should be entirely accurate, which is that you yourself did contact our UNISERV rep, and you requested the meeting, but...
I did contact your UNISERV rep, and I did request the meeting, and I did all of that. And this is the last time I'm going to repeat it. If I haven't been clear, I apologize. I did all of that because it was my understanding that it was the desire of the association to meet with us before school opened in September. And I understand that it was your desire to meet without the mediator, but that was, but it was our position that the only way that that meeting would be productive was with the mediator being present. So where we may have had a disagreement was whether or not that meeting should be facilitated by the mediator, or he had jurisdiction over it, or whether there should be a meeting without the mediator. But yes, you're absolutely correct. I contacted Mr. Render, and I'm sure that Mr. Render probably told you that I contacted him, because it was my understanding that the association wanted to meet with us before school opened in September.
Thank you for acknowledging that you made that call.
So I'd like to bring up another topic, if I may. Oh, can I? Okay. What happened?
Are we up to board? Are we up to board comment? Are we up to board comment?
Yes. So I'd like to change gears a little bit. At previous board meetings, probably July twenty-second, maybe, I don't remember exactly, but at previous board meetings, I've talked about a referendum in November to ask for, ask the voters for a tax levy to replace the state aid that we lost. And however, we were supposed to have an infrastructure referendum for November. So in operations, we talked about this, and so I decided that, you know, it would probably be more clear for the voters if there was only one question, the question on infrastructure. However, that's not going to happen, because we don't have the PEC letters and all this discussion today. It looks like we're not even going to have, so we're not going to have an infrastructure referendum for November. When we're going to have it is undetermined. So because of that, I have a proposal for the board to consider tonight, to ask for a tax levy in the amount of, can I just read it, actually? So there's, I actually like copied from the March twelfth referendum, so all the wording, et cetera, but I have two proposals, and so I'll read them. Proposal one is there shall be raised an additional eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars for general funds in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. These taxes will be used to provide funds towards restoring levels of programs. Approval of these taxes will result in a permanent increase in the district's tax levy. The additional taxes authorized herein will be used exclusively for purposes described herein, and to finance expenditures that are in addition to those necessary to achieve the New Jersey student learning standards. Then I have a proposal two, and I won't read the whole thing, but basically, that proposal is there shall be raised an additional one million sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars for general funds, also in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. And the explanation for that is this. State funding for Hillsborough Township Public Schools was decreased by two hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, was decreased by five hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, for a total of eight hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So that's the sum total in proposal one. State funding is projected to decrease by one thousand sixty-nine, one million sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, and that's the number in proposal two. And as I continue with the explanation, these reductions in state funding, coupled with rising costs outside the board's control, cause the board to reduce teachers and staff, increase class size, increase fees for students to participate in athletics and co-curricular activities, increase fees for technology, and eliminate programs the board could no longer afford. Passing these proposals will allow the district to reinstate some programs that the board previously could not afford, and reduce negative programmatic impacts in future years, as state funding is scheduled to continue to be decreased. So I put this together today, actually, because I knew that we would need something to look at if we were going to make a motion for a resolution for November fifth referendum. So if I...
Are you asking for a motion for what you just read?
Yes.
She's making a motion.
I couldn't possibly make that kind of a decision right now, the way you're going.
Well, so I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion, and I'll pass that. I just have two extra copies. I make a motion for the Board of Education to adopt the resolution as written on this piece of paper, for a referendum for November fifth, two thousand nineteen. So if I could just pass these down. I think you have a copy, Lorraine?
Someone going to second this?
Second.
Okay, should we have discussion?
Point of order. Before we proceed with this, I don't remember now, what is our current curfew?
Eleven, yes.
It's eleven, unless we vote ten.
Which is four minutes from now, so should we take care of that piece of business first, before we get into this discussion?
No.
All right, fine. By take care of this business, I mean whether or not we agreed...
Chris, I was hoping we could wrap this.
In four minutes?
If we had that deadline, can we wrap this?
Sure, go for it.
So Greg, were you going to make a comment?
Yeah, I want to make a comment. Look, as soon as the referendum failed, I came to board meeting here, and I did my own calculations, and with the post-referendum failure budget cuts that we made to various areas, like half a million dollars from curriculum, and the cursee busing, plus the additional revenues, and all the different things, that it would take, without disturbing that, unfortunately, it would take about three and a half million dollars in extra tax levy to restore all the positions cut. And I recommend immediately that we look to pass a referendum for a tax levy at some point for three and a half million dollars. I want all of the positions restored, not, I'm sorry, Jean, but not eight hundred thousand dollars. I want all of the positions restored, and we could do that for about three and a half million dollars. That's been my position. I personally think that it's better to have it near budget time, so we can, so Dr. Schiff can tell us exactly what he would use that three and a half million dollars for, exactly which positions. He can't be expected in December or January, maybe, to tell us with any authority where, you know, because, look, and when I say positions restored, things are changing, things are always fluid in the school district, so they're not, maybe, there won't be the exact same jobs go back, because our needs change. But you get the idea. In general, there are fifty positions lost. We could restore fifty to the areas that we need at that time. I think a couple of board members to my left here were in agreement with me on that, on that type of a referendum. I don't know if they still are, but that's what I'd be in favor of. I don't think an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar referendum, even though I understand the math, and I understand how it's tied to the exact amount of state aid that we lost, I don't think that's going to do it, and I think it'd just be, pass or failure, it won't make a difference.
I'd just like to say that I appreciate both comments. I do believe that we need additional revenues in order to meet our future needs. The process of putting something on the ballot needs to go through bond counsel attorney review, and this language hasn't yet had that... hasn't yet had that, had that done, so we would, we would need to go through a process before, before it, I think could be legitimately considered by a board, I'm not sure that it would be prudent for a board to move an agenda item onto an agenda that has the, that's a lot of legal implications, and I'll, I'll turn it over to our board counsel for, for further comment on that.
So I have, I haven't, I haven't reviewed the proposal specifically with regard to the language that, that was being, that's being proposed, I mean, it is in the form, I listened, I listened to the presentation, it is in the form of an additional spending proposal, which is what you are proposing to do, to exceed your two percent tax levy, and have the voters authorize the additional expense, a lot of the verbiage that you used, I, I think is, is, is correct and appropriate, I'd, I'd wanna review it specifically, and in terms of the interpretive statement, I would wanna make sure that that is very clear to the voter as to not, 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 not that the math equates to the state aid reductions, but what the money's gonna be used for, so I think as part of the interpretive statement, just based on what I heard, I would, I would want to include in that what the, the restoration would be used for, what positions are going to be restored, what programs are going to be restored, I think the voters would wanna know that before they approve the additional spending proposal. That's my initial reaction.
Chris?
An attempt to have my piece at the microphone, maybe? I, I can't support this, I'm, I'm trying, I, I cannot support this at this time for two reasons, one, because we haven't had enough time to actually evaluate what this is, independent of the language, to evaluate the idea of this proposal, and secondly, we've, we've been discussing a number of different referendum scenarios, I'm not prepared to decide on one without really taking a bigger picture view on all of the potential referendum that we need to be looking at, so I think it's far too early to take action on this potential set of ideas, when we still are figuring out what we will or won't do for building maintenance and, you know, all these other things we've been talking about with, with no background information and time to review this and all those other things pending, we need, we talked before about, about clarity and transparency, we can't just jump back and forth between different referendum, we need to have a clear picture of what we're doing and why, and what the timeline is for all this, so for that reason, I cannot support it this time.
Okay. Are we ready for a roll call, please? Roll call.
Ms. Eldred Howard?
No.
Mr. Gillette? Dr. Harris?
No.
Ms. Maroon?
No.
Mr. Pulsifer?
No.
Dr. Sasan?
No.
Ms. Stats?
No.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Ms. Haas?
No.
Motion fails.
All ready?
Motion to adjourn?